All right. Good evening. In compliance with Chapter 551, open meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order an information session and special meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, October 10, 2024, at 6:04 PM. A quorum of the board is physically present at AISD Central Office to conduct this meeting. This meeting is streaming live on AISD TV and Apple TV, and it's also being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum, the Sound Broadband, and on Channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. So, welcome and thanks for joining us. So, next is an opportunity for the public to share comments with the board. This time, allow speakers to comment publicly on any topic of their choosing directly to the school board. So, we have time for up to 60 speakers. And as a reminder, the district continues to provide time during the regular voting meetings of the board to hear from the public about agenda items for consideration and vote. So, this is an opportunity for the board to take part in listening to our community. And while we wish we could respond or provide feedback, we are required to limit our questions to requests for clarification or to follow up directly with the administration. So, members of the public wishing to participate in the public comment portion of our meeting called a dedicated AISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or to audio record their remarks. So, tonight, we have two who signed up to speak in person, and we have 10 who left a recorded message. So, we will now move to the in-person testimony. And in order to provide as many opportunities for input as possible, each speaker will be allotted one minute, and no substitutions or yielding of time to others is permitted. Callers who signed up to speak in person are welcome to come to the microphone when their name is called. And there's a device up there that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time. When the buzzer sounds, please finish your final thought in one sentence. And again, we ask that whether you come to give a complaint or praise that you reference the staff person by position or by abbreviated last name. And we ask that all audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for others at all times. So, thank you. And our in-person speakers for tonight are Scott Johnson and former trustee Cheryl Bradley. So, thank you. And so, we'll start with Mr. Johnson whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Scott Johnson here. The Homeless Student Assistance Fund appears on the City of Austin Utility Bill, but if you don't get the bill, you have to look for it under COAutilities.com. This particular opportunity is one to donate money so that the Project Help Program with AISD and all of the other school districts get a proportionate amount that are in the Austin Energy Service area. I'm glad to say that the average per month for this current fiscal year that ended on September 30th, we raised the funding monthly by about $1,000 total. And that, again, will be 50% or more of any funds that are gotten go to AISD's Project Help. It's expected to be higher this year. The checks should be coming this month or early next month as well. And I would like to say that the homeless student numbers that I got from the Project Help Program are this. In 2021, in that school year, 1,183. The following year, 1,279. And the current year ending in 2024, in the spring, is 1,878. This is, has to be a concern for AISD and for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Bradley.
Good afternoon. One question. Why should District 1 support the VADA? Our schools should be a beacon of discovery and hope, just like North and Southwest Austin. Yet, District 1's schools are a beacon of despair, disappointment, and frustration. You can look at your STAR results and see how we come up with that. The district have a schoolhouse-to-jailhouse pipeline. And right now, you have a schoolyard-to-graveyard highway. Someone needs to care about that. We've been hoodwinked. We've been led astray. And my favorite word, we've been bamboozled. We voted on tax elections in the past, and we are waiting to see the return on our investment. Give us a reason why we should vote for this VADA. African-American population is less than 4,500. We used to call it benign neglect in the district. Now, we can just call it they're just being ignored. So, give us a reason why District 1 should support the VADA. Trustee Boswell, thank you for coming out to the forum. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, we will now play the recorded messages for public comment. So, please listen carefully.
Hello. My name is Ryan English, and I am a parent of a middle school student in AISD. I'm calling today to express my support for continued funding for librarians, just like surrounding districts in the Austin area. Librarians are essential because they provide a robust reading collection and are trained to work with the community to select books that appeal to both the school curriculum and student interests. They also teach research skills and digital literacy, including fact-checking and identifying misinformation. Lastly, librarians spark a love of learning and encourage reading, both of which are tied to higher graduation rates. Thank you for recognizing that funding librarians is essential to our children's success.
Hello. My name is Claudia Ulrich, and I'm a parent with two children in AISD school. I want to express my strong support for continued funding for school librarians. It's concerning that Texas doesn't require a fully-funded librarians on every campus, unlike many other states. However, Austin ISD stands out as a leader in our state, ensuring that every campus has a fully-funded librarian. Librarians play a pivotal role in addressing low reading assessment scores and fostering a love of reading. They create a welcoming space for students to explore books, participate in clubs, and engage with literature in ways that ignite curiosity. My children, like many others, have benefited immensely from the guidance and support of their school librarians. I truly cannot imagine our schools without these vital professionals. Librarians take on numerous responsibilities far beyond what I can cover in this message. But at the heart of it all, they are key to building strong literacy skills and nurturing a lifelong love of learning in our kids. Thank you for continuing to prioritize the funding of school librarians. They are indispensable to our children's success.
Hello. My name is Lisa Kletus. I'm a parent. I would like to urge the Board of Trustees and Superintendent to adopt, install, approve, and make operational cameras in all eligible special education settings. There's been an uptake, reported both in social media and in the formal media, of assaults to students from educators at school, as well as restraints that are going undocumented. In an effort to ensure student safety for those, particularly those students who cannot communicate when things are happening to them, and considering that the voters in Austin approved a bond for cameras to be used for this purpose, I would urge all of you to please vote for the purchase installation and to make operational cameras in all eligible settings for student safety. Cases like Riley where a student was assaulted were discovered and investigated thanks to footage. Thank you so much.
Mi nombre es Alejandro Calderado. Soy el padre de un alumno en AISD. Y la razón por la cual estoy llamando es para pedir a los trustees que voten, para instalar y que hagan las cámaras operacionales en todos los sectores que se necesiten. Se vio una subida de ataques a estudiantes, y me gustaría pedir que parte del dinero del bond se use para proteger a estudiantes, especialmente proteger a estudiantes con discapacidades. Deberían ser las cámaras operacionales y funcionando e instaladas en todos los sectores que se necesiten. Como padre, como vecino, me gustaría que hagan algo con el dinero más allá de lo que están haciendo en este momento. Gracias.
This is an interpretation into English of Alejandro Calderado's message. My name is Alejandro Calderado. I'm a parent of an AISD student. And the reason I am calling is to ask our trustees to vote to install and make cameras operational where they are needed. We have seen an increase in attacks on students. And I would like to request that part of the bond money be used to protect students, especially to protect students with disabilities. Cameras should be operational, working, and installed in places where they are needed. As a parent, as a neighbor, I would like for you to do something with the money beyond the things you're presently doing. Thanks.
Mindy Bass, Maplewood Elementary Librarian. Hello, my name is Mindy Bass. This is my 29th year in education, 19th in AISD, and fourth as a Maplewood librarian. While I understand that budget cuts are difficult and things need to go, I'm speaking out today to help convince you that replacing librarians with clerks is not what is best for the students of AISD. While attending library science classes through UT, we are repeatedly told that libraries are the heart of the school and librarians have the power to influence the reading culture of the entire student body. I've tried to do just that over the past three years at Maplewood through carefully selected Read Alouds and corresponding Makerspace activities, running two book fairs a year, inviting three published authors to present to the student body yearly, organizing at least four reading challenges a year, holding pull-out sessions for GT students twice a month, and more. I say all this to illustrate the stark difference between a clerk who simply checks out books in and out and a specially-trained librarian. Studies conducted over the last several years show that strong school libraries are also linked to other important indicators of student success, including graduation rates and mastery of academic standards. And they have often found that the benefits associated with good library programs are strongest for the most vulnerable and at risk.
Hi. My name is Jenny Curran. And my sister is a librarian at Pickles Elementary School, which she loves being. And I want you to understand, I don't want Austin ISD to go the way of Houston ISD and get rid of libraries completely and turn them into detention centers. Schools that have libraries have a higher success rate with graduation, with reading, with math, all of the essentials. They graduate educated students. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Helen Miller. I'm a community member and taxpayer. I will not support the tax increase based on the following. There is no clear plan of support for African-American students who continue to struggle in AISD from kindergarten to 12th grade. There is still the lack of certified teachers in math and science that underserved campuses in East Austin who have a high rate of special needs and emergent bilingual students. Individual campus test scores have not been shared with families or community members. Please let me know what that support looks like when they don't even know what areas they need to focus on. There is no true path of success, yet you want to raise salaries. Also, the school-to-pipeline-to-prison is not decreasing. It is increasing in AISD. What type of interventions are going to take place to decrease the school-to-pipeline-to-prison? Thank you.
Hi. My name is Hector Marto. I'm an AISD dad. Marshall Middle School has yet to be assigned a zone, and enrollment is about to begin for a third year. Does AISD intend to remove all zone assignments for middle schools? Why is Marshall the only school that needs years of data gathering to set the zone? AISD should assign a zone today that coincides with the eight elementary schools that were fractured from their feeder patterns in 2014. Northeast Austin should have a cohesive feeder pattern from elementary to high school that respects our existing school communities, including Bertha Sadler Means, Marshall Middle School, and Gus Garcia. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Nadia Khan. Enrollment is about to begin for a third year, and Marshall Middle School still has no set zone. The zone is intended to reunite the eight elementary school region that was fractured by the district in 2014 when they closed our two local middle schools, re-envisioned them as single-gender options, and inadvertently reassigned the entire area without community input to bus all students not choosing single gender to four out-of-area middle schools. I just heard another story of someone who thought they'd enrolled at Marshall last year to find out they were defaulted to an out-of-area assignment instead. Boundary adjustments, if needed, can come next year using the district-wide process that all communities experiencing over-enrollment by in-zone students should be subject to as well. Have we already made adjustments to boundaries to limit over-enrollment of in-zone kids where it has been occurring for multiple years in a row already? We have not asked for special treatment. We want what historically well-served areas have, a feeder pattern that unites rather than divides. Thank you.
My name is Quitla Wagera, and I'm the parent of three Austin ISD students. I have several questions about enrollment. Has the district limited enrollments that exceed building capacities to curb resource concentrations that exacerbate inequalities of underutilized campuses and to continue to reduce reliance on costly portables? Have we stopped the over-enrollment by transfer students district-wide? Do we have a new administrative routine boundary adjustment process to keep buildings at or below capacity? Have we made adjustments to boundaries to limit over-enrollment of in-zone kids where it has been occurring for multiple years in a row? Will we soon have an equitable enrollment transfer policy that applies to the whole district, that works for all programs, that show more interest in space, that prioritizes district and community's needs and values over one's ability to buy or rent housing, and allows the district to sunset the outdated and idiosyncratic diversity choice policy? Lot of questions about enrollment. Please consider addressing some of them. Thank you.
All right. So, this concludes public comment. Trustees, are there any questions or clarifications? Trustee Hunter.
Thank you. I don't need this answered right now, but I do want to get some clarification on where our uncertified teachers are throughout the district and where that concentration is. I definitely like some clarification from the administration about campus scores being released to families. I'm not sure if that was like the general one or if it was like the big one that nobody's getting. So, I don't know. I have to get some clarification on that. And then, just some real good questions about a plan and intervention. I'd also like to have that information.
Thank you.
One more. Sorry. And then, another caller called in about the enrollment process, or three callers called in about the enrollment process and the boundaries of Marshall. I know that we received a little bit of information about the data, and I'm still not clear about why it's not being done when it was promised that after two years it would be done. So, if we can get clarification on that, that would be good also. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other trustees?
No, just want to echo the request from Trustee Hunter. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also have the exact same three questions. So, I think there's some interest in a plan for, you know, that really outlines what we're doing. I understand that the administration is doing a lot with priority schools and schools where our African-American students are concentrated, and just curious to know when that's going to be made available to the public. And do you know if it is the individual? What I heard in the comment was it was parents were not getting their students' individual test scores.
I'm trying, I think, well, I don't recall exactly the way she said it was said. I wasn't sure if it was that they felt that the school wasn't getting the individual score because we haven't released any of that. Now, student scores, and then, we've also provided scores to our educators. So, that information does exist and has been provided. So, maybe if I can follow up with the caller and ask specifically what she was referring to. Because we have provided that out.
Okay. So, the individual student test scores have been provided to families. But the campus scores have not due to the TEA delays. Okay. Thank you. And then, the zoning for Marshall. And I know that one of the things that we have scheduled, you know, one of the things that we're supposed to do through LSG is get a presentation on the strategic plan or implementation plan from the administration. So, I guess that might be a good place to put in something related to the zoning and Marshall and just allow us to share with the public what the timeline might be for something like that.
Yes. I think that would be a great opportunity to do it, potentially as part of a future superintendent update. I do want to acknowledge that there was work completed by the Long Range Planning Committee and the information that's provided to Equity Advisory Committee. And for me, that would serve as a kind of a foundation for the work moving forward. You know, there's lots of different ways that this can be done across a large organization. But whatever we do, whatever we start to do specifically with General Marshall, needs to be in alignment with what we intend to do moving forward. I think that's one expectation that I have. I would hate to create two separate processes. But I do want to acknowledge that LRP and EAC did provide a good starting point. We can provide an update on that. But it is important for me that that be aligned and consistent for what we do moving forward.
Thank you. Any other trustees? Yes, Trustee Zapata.
There was also a comment about the school-to-prison pipeline. And I know we've had a presentation on that before. And it would be good if we could also get an update on that, on the work that we're doing. Because I know there's a lot of great work moving forward on that.
Thank you. And I think that is one of our constraints.
It's not written that way.
Okay.
But what we can do, maybe we could talk about it with the team and then figure out how to present that back to you all. That is a specific component of lots of other things. And I remember and I recall how it was presented last time, and I'm not sure that that would be the way to present it moving forward, given that we do have goals now and plans. So, I think we need a little bit of time to strategize around that.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Okay. So, thank you, trustees. And as a reminder to the public, please feel free to share any general comments or questions with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. So, next, we are going to move to public testimony for the action item on tonight's agenda, 14.1, Travis Central Appraisal District nominations. Tonight, we didn't have any callers to sign up to speak in person or record a message. So, we'll just glide right on into the president's report. So, Election Day is coming up on November 5. As part of our culture of voting and in alignment with our desire to ensure we have community-accessible voting locations while ensuring safety for our students and staff, AISD will have a student holiday for Election Day. And early voting starts October 21st. Yes, I knew, Trustee Boswell would know that. Okay, so, multiple sites will be used as polling locations this year. And those are Anita Coy, O'Henry Middle School, Dawson Elementary, Zilker, Lamar Middle School, Campbell, General Marshall, Delco, Davis Elementary, Bailey Middle School, Bear Creek, Houston Elementary, Perez, Beddychek, Jocelyn, Barrington, Blazer Intermediate, Akins High School, Boone Elementary, Bowie High School, Mills, TA Brown, Barrington, Gus Garcia, McCollum, Rosedale, Padron, Navarro, and Anderson High School. So, great way to get our, I love that our school district is involved in that. And so, new for this year, the district has partnered with our county election team to make more opportunities for students to serve as student election clerks. Student election clerks check in voters and assist voters with the voting equipment as needed. They work all day on Election Day, which, remember, is a student holiday, which includes setting up prior to the polls, opening and then closing down the polling place at the end of the night. Student election clerks are able to help with all these duties under the supervision of the Election Day judge at the polling location. And this is not a volunteer job. These students are paid hourly at $20 an hour. Training is provided, and you can learn more at www.votetravis.org and then selecting "Become an Election Worker." So, I just want to give a shout-out to our community advocacy committee, Trustee Boswell and the butts, who are helping to lead the effort in getting this culture of voting, the student election clerks, and all that happening. It's so, so important. So, moving on, as part of the agreed order with TEA, the agreement requires that the board shall, at the first board, authorize public meeting each month. We will publicly report by reading into the record, A, the percentage of time invested in student outcomes during the prior three-month time period, and then, B, the total time spent in closed session during the prior month. So, the July, August, and September three-month average of board meeting time spent on lone star governance, defined student outcomes, and special education monitoring was 56.9%. So, we have exceeded our target of 50%. So, good job, board. Yes, Trustee Gonzalez, clap, clap. And for the last month, September 2024, we were actually at 91.43%. So, I really want to thank the board and the administration for staying committed to the lone star governance goals and really honing in on student outcomes and special education monitoring. And so, that's really good to hear. The board spent 325 minutes in executive session in September. And now, I would like to pivot and ask Trustee Zapata to share a statement recognizing one of our community and city partners.
Thank you, President Singh. I would like to recognize and thank City Councilwoman Vanessa Fuentes for addressing the speed limit and school zone signage for our students at Blazer Elementary and Intermediate campuses. This has been a concern of the community since the school was built. And she was successful in having the speed limit reduced 10 miles and also the school zone signage. And that just happened yesterday. So, just wanted to give a shout-out to her. This is an issue her and I met on when we first were elected and at our first PTA meeting with Blazer parents and community. And so, I just want to, again, thank her for her leadership in making this happen and to keep, to supporting our students and their safety at our Blazer Elementary and Intermediate schools.
Thank you, Councilwoman Fuentes and Trustee Zapata. Yes. So important to keep our kiddos safe. All right. And next, we're going to talk about student achievement. And this is part of our commitment to really focusing on student outcomes. And today, we have a presentation on Constraint Progress Measure 1.1, Chronic Absenteeism. And actually, the presentation has been recorded and can be found online on Agenda Item 5.1 for all watching at home. So, our time, and you can just Google Austin ISD Board Docs if you're interested in finding it. And then, once you get there, it's pretty self-explanatory. So, our time during this meeting tonight will be an opportunity for trustees to ask any questions of our superintendent and staff. So, we have, you know, this, just as a reminder, these minutes will not count towards our student outcomes focus time, and it's not neutral either. So, and I know many of you, several of you ask questions ahead of time. But Phil, we have scheduled 30 minutes for this discussion. Before we ask questions, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. So, does anyone have evidence that the elements of an effective monitoring report are not present? Okay. So, excellent. Since everyone agrees that the required elements are present, we will ask Superintendent Segura to invite up and introduce the team and then, open up the floor to questions.
Thank you, President Singh. My team and I are now available to answer any questions. I have Ms. Patty Rodriguez, Deputy Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Leading; Dr. Gloria Williams, Assistant Superintendent of Student Support Services; and Ms. Carla de la Rosa, Director of Student Attendance. And again, for all those following along, this is posted online. It's attached to a board docs and is available for viewing now or at some time in the future. And the questions also were uploaded to the board docs.
All right. So, I guess you guys are not presenting because it's already online, correct?
Correct.
So, we're just looking up for questions. So, we will now open the floor up, open the floor for our monitoring conversation. And I wanted to see if anyone had any questions, comments. Yes.
Thank you for all of this. Thank you for the answers, the written answers to the questions, the video presentation, and the work and the plan, which I understand involves really doing a deep dive into why students are absent. I know we're not the only place in the country that's facing this, but I know that we need to do better for our students, give our students a reason to be at school and really understand why they're not and how we can help. So, given the impact that this has on our students' well-being and our students' academic success, is there a time, I think this is probably a question for you, Superintendent Segura, when your team will be bringing an update to us on the progress that's made and kind of sharing that progress in a superintendent's update in a public meeting somewhere so we know that progress is being made?
Absolutely. So, I'm not sure on the monitoring calendar when it comes back around, but I can definitely incorporate this as part of, I mean, it already is actually as part of one of our comprehensive plans. We actually talked- We actually talked about that today, that many of these that are coming around early in the school year, you know, you're, you see the plans, you can see the work that has been taking place, but you don't see what it looks like and how it matches with the five-year overall kind of reduction as a function of the constraint. But we can absolutely provide that via board update at some point in the near future. But my goal is to have all of it outlined in duration form with milestones. And as you look at the presentation, you'll see many of the things that we're doing and the plans that are coming into place. But I definitely can provide the space for an update. I think board update would be ideal. I'm trying to think the next time it comes around. So what we can do, I guess we can look at doing a board update and then just attaching it to a future agenda.
Okay, thank you. I would really appreciate having that, especially I think once we have a better understanding of what's happening. I know in your answers, you said you think students are, especially our high school students, where the chronic absenteeism is in some places above 50% right now, that you know students are working to support their families, something that began during COVID and is exacerbated by expense. Maybe they're helping take care of younger siblings. Maybe we're not giving them that safety or that reason to be at school. Mental health is obviously an issue. I know we may be making new investments in that. So I think having that understanding, especially of that why, and not only whether progress is being made, but what we learn about the why can help us in our role to connect with our community to help figure out what we as a whole community can kind of lean in to help us help our students so they can be in school learning and thriving. So thank you.
And I think one of the things that's important to acknowledge is that the campus action plans are campus-specific. And it's nuanced. And so as we get information, it's important to know that a solution for one campus may not be applied in the same way to a different campus. And you're seeing that at middle schools and high schools as well. So I think as these build out, we would appreciate the opportunity to present those back via board update. And then overall, kind of see the progress you make month to month.
I think that's fantastic. And I think that is part of what gives me confidence that this will be addressed. So thank you. And will those campus plans be posted with the campus improvement plan? Will they be posted somewhere online for families to see, for the community to have an understanding?
At this point, we hadn't identified a place to put them. We can consider what that might look like. Let me get with the team and see if there's an opportunity to post them somewhere. And in what form?
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Yes, trustee Hunter?
Not a comment, a question.
Okay.
I have a question about, we're looking at absenteeism. Have we done any sort of comparison with tardies? So those children who get to school but just like 10 minutes late, 15 minutes late, right? What do we, what is that telling us?
So we haven't done a ton of exploration with the tardies, mainly because they don't count towards any of our reporting to the state. Individual campuses have done a significant amount of work on their, on their tardies. And they do look at it as a campus because it does impact them significantly. So we have some campuses that have built communication plans around parents, around dropping off students at school and the policy and procedure for that. So it does, it is campus by campus as a district. We have not done any deep dive into that, but we certainly can.
The reason I mention that is because those tardy students will become those absentee students. So get out in front of it is my thinking. The next thing is, is that I kind of am hearing things about, like my daughter's like, I can't be late to school because I don't want to go to Saturday school, right? I don't, I'm not sure, like, if that's going to encourage people to come to school more or come to school less, right? It's like, can they make me come to school once a week? I don't know. But I do appreciate, I'm going to shout out Mr. Moore, because I watch him, I think he posts like every day his attendance. And when it's like really bad, he's like fainting or whatever. And he's like, oh, parents, please bring your kids to school. And he really works hard on it. It's about, but it's around communication. And so I know we say every plan won't work at every school, but I promise you, communication will work everywhere. And that's what has to happen. And we really need to be talking with parents and why it's important and finding out why their kid is at school. Because when I was a teacher, I made phone calls and parents were like, I can't make him come. Can you make him come? And then we said, ah, this family needs support in another area. So I don't know how much of that we're doing.
Yeah. Well, I think fundamentally, that's like the foundation of each of these plans. We talked about it today even, that the relationship between the campus and the family is really what's going to help drive the numbers the way that we need them. It's not someone, you know, sitting there creating, you know, some type of disciplinary action for not coming. That's not going to work. And so I think what you're describing is exactly what we want to have incorporated to these plans. It has to start with the administration, creating a stronger relationship with families so that we understand why or why not a student is coming to campus. And there are many, I mean, I think in some of the responses, you saw that there are many different reasons. I mean, we talked about, you know, different jobs, not having transportation. We've talked about just all the challenges that a family may have. And so we need to get close and figure out what works for each community. And that can only occur with improved communication and improved relationships with the community.
Excellent. And I just have my last few seconds that I have. I really want to make sure that we're leveraging, I just, every time I say this, it just frustrates me so much. We're not leveraging our parents. If we let them know why it's important, how it's important, what their kids are benefiting. Kids aren't coming because they don't want to come. They're not enjoying it. I mean, I went. I enjoyed it. I didn't go to class, but I went. But so those kids, they don't have to do that anymore, right? They have other options and other places they could go. And so that's what they're doing. And so we really, talking to parents is great, and I want to leverage parents. But we also have to say, look, Candace, you've been absent 62 times. What's up with that? And the kid might say, hey, I'm working to feed my family. Or they might say, I don't like school. I can't read. It's not fun for me. And then we can like get in there. But right now, I feel like it's kind of up here and we're not down there where we need to be. So I guess that was a comment at the end there. Thank you.
I do want to speak on that though, because that's extremely important. And we've noted that. And that's been a huge part of also what we talked about in the presentation is a really robust professional development plan. And we started that early this summer and we've continued it regularly. We were just at the assistant principals' learning series last week for elementary and the week before for high school and middle school, in addition to meeting with principals and really going over the three tiers of intervention and assuring that they understand what role they play as an administrator and what role the teacher plays and what role the counselor plays and the LMHP, and also a very strategic way to track these students and identify them early. So we are taking that to heart and really focusing on that developing, building capacity with our leaders to really engage early to be more preventative. We don't want to be doing, looking at truancy. We don't want to be going to court. That's not where we want. We want to be able to prevent that. And we want them back on campus. And that's been part of our, we have a year-long professional development plan that's regularly engaging the leaders in that process.
In addition, I just want to mention that this year, we are going back to home visits, getting parents and families engaged, finding out what we, they see that we need to do to support their children. So.
Great.
I really appreciate you just said there, Dr. Williams. I'm curious, and I did not watch the video. I did not realize that was attached. But I don't see in the, I didn't see in the presentation, the engagement with the families part or the home visits, where they establishing greater relationships with the families, or even asking families why their children are absent and how we can help in the section about campuses doing root causes and deep dives. So I'm just curious, like where, in the spirit of like seeing it in writing, where is that part of the plan?
We will certainly share that. But on October 4th, we submitted an grant application with the Office of the Governor for chronic absenteeism. And that was one of the strategies that we were funded to support, where we can pay support staff after school hours and on weekends to do home visits and engage more with parents.
Okay, thank you. So I do just, no, I don't really see that in this presentation or this plan. So I'd love to see it updated with that information.
So it's, it's part of the three tiers of intervention, aligning with the MTSS process. And so when you're meeting a tier one, it can be that the teacher is engaging with the family or even the campus is engaging with the family. And then tier two, when they're meeting individually, because a root cause is going to be a root cause for one student versus another student. And so that's where part of that family engagement is coming is with that individual conversation.
So yeah, I would just like to see that in the plan and then so when we have updates on implementation. Because I do know that sometimes root cause analysis happens around a table with people saying, oh, yeah, our kid's this, our kid's that, our family's this. And a lot of those generalizations are being made about other people's children, about cultures that, that they, the people making those assumptions don't necessarily understand or who have been kind of versed in books on poverty and et cetera that don't necessarily accurately represent the diverse experience of our families. So I just want to make sure that it's, again, like in the spirit of, let's not just talk about the board meeting. Let's just put it in the plan and then have follow-up on, here, look, these are the numbers of conversations that took place, one-on-one with students and their families about their absences. These are the numbers of campuses that did not do that yet. And here's how we're going to ensure that the principals do at future meetings, or at future updates.
All right. So at this moment, so thank you, trustees. And at this point, I will entertain a motion for the acceptance of this monitoring report. Secretary Boswell, do we have a motion to accept it?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
The trustees, is there any discussion on this item? All right. So having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Zapata to accept the monitoring report. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. The motion passes. Oh, okay. Those opposed? All right. And the motion, and there's abstaining? No one? Okay. So the motion passes with eight in favor and one opposing. Thank you, trustees, for taking part in the shared commitment to students and student outcomes. All right. We will now continue our discussion on student achievement. Next on the agenda is a presentation on scorecard goal one, literacy, which is goal progress measure 1.1. We have scheduled 60 minutes for tonight's discussion, and this time will count towards our student outcome time. I know this is a big priority for, for all of us. So before we hear our presentation, we need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. Does anyone have evidence that the elements of an effective monitoring report are not present? Okay. All right. So since everyone agrees that the required elements are present, we will turn the floor to superintendent Segura for the presentation.
Thank you, President Singh. The team and I will present on the scorecard goal one, literacy GPM 1.1. I have joining me Ms. Patty Rodriguez, Deputy Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Leading, Ms. Lakisha Drink, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Schools, Dr. Mary Ann Maxwell, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Academics, and Ms. Linniana Kendrick, Director of Elementary Humanities. And we will be pulling up a presentation. Is it operating? There it is. All right, perfect. So for our families following along, this is GPM 1.1. And this is the first time we'll be presenting it, based on the new scorecard that was adopted on June 20th of 2024. Goal one, literacy GPM, the goal, the present of third grade students earning meets grade level or above on the STAR reading assessment in English or Spanish will increase from 47% in June of 2024 to 59% by June of 2029. Go to the next slide. And on GPM 1.1, as approved in the scorecard, the percent of second grade students scoring in the recommended for intervention level on the NWEA map, reading achievement score proficiency indicator, below 30% in English and 30th percentile in English and 40th percentile in Spanish will decrease from 30% in June 2024 to 29% by June 2029. And there are some nuances. This is different than the scorecard indicator that was used previously for maps. So just as we move along, you'll kind of hear us reference that because the goal here is to really ensure we're tracking the students that are on grade level. So that'll be something that we weave into the conversation. So with that, I'll hand it over to Dr. Mary Ann Maxwell to take us through the next several slides.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Segura, President Singh, and Board of Trustees. So we'll start off tonight with just talking about our overarching objectives for early literacy. We really first wanted to build on the foundation of the literacy practices and resources that we've already put in place in Austin ISD. So we spent a few years with some trainings with investment and resources, investment in tier one with resources and also with instructional coaches to coach into tier one. You can see the research quote there really speaks to tier one. Because although we've made significant improvements to all of our tiers and intervention resources as well, tier one is really where we will find the most of our efforts and where our efforts will see the most fruit. And so really, that's what we are mostly talking about this evening. And so we're talking about our initial data points. This is a screener that all students are taking as the initial data point for understanding where we are in early literacy. So building on that foundation, we also want to really take a focus this year, and this is, we'll refer to our plans in that, on increasing understanding of our school leaders around early literacy. And so when I say school leaders, and when we reference school instructional leaders on campuses, we are referencing principals, assistant principals, instructional coaches, teacher leaders all throughout. They were all part of our plan this year and all part of professional learning. We really wanted to invest our time in those people because they are on a regular basis in classrooms with our teachers, supporting the work, supporting, understanding of the resources, and then really just supporting really good, strong, early literacy instruction. Oftentimes, they're missed in a professional learning plan, and we go straight to teachers. And we have definitely built that foundation with teachers over the last few years. But we wanted to make sure that we were really, really working closely with all of those people, giving teachers feedback every day in campuses. And then finally, support teachers themselves with implementation so that we really are focusing on improved student outcomes. So really focusing on our data-based decision-making model, how we're using our data, how we're using PLCs as, with teacher teams, and then how we're supporting teachers in the classroom with observation and feedback and with the resources that we have provided to them. And so as we look at the data for GPM 1.1, what we're looking at here is our initial screener, excuse me, that all students take in literacy for second grade. And with that is our initial data point to see where our students are in literacy. This is just one of the data points that we collect, but it is one that all students take. And so it's important to look at it to see across the board how all of our students and our student populations are performing in comparison to each other. And this particular measurement is different than the ones we've done in the past year. So we've been looking at second grade STAR projected proficiency, which is just a measure of how those second graders are projected to achieve and perform on STAR when they take it in third grade. So it's actually a look ahead, kind of a leap a year ahead into how they would perform on STAR. This is different. This is a measure of how they are performing in comparison to all other second graders that take this same assessment. And so that's called the achievement percentile. And so how our students are performing compared to all other students taking this assessment, which is in the millions, that, that let us know kind of where we are performing. It also gives us much more information than that, really specific skills to literacy. It gives us information on grouping students according to skill and things like that. But for purposes of tonight, we'll just talk about the achievement percentiles. And so what we see here in this graph and this table is how we have performed on this assessment. First, the first three columns are comparing year over year. So spring of 21 and spring of 22 and then spring of 23. So at the end of the year, how are our students performing in their achievement percentiles? And then it breaks it up last year into fall, winter, and spring. We did that to be a little more demonstrative of what the work has been like lately. At the time of the submission of this board presentation, we didn't have beginning of year data for literacy for this screener. And so it's not included in this presentation. It will be included in the next presentation in the spring as well as middle of year. So we'll be able to look at where we started this year in literacy and where we're moving the needle throughout the year, based on what we're doing. You don't see as much movement within a year as you would year over year. So it's really important to kind of look at those year-over-year targets. And so, for example, referencing spring of 21 and then spring of 22, spring of 23, all the way to spring of 24, you kind of jump over a couple of columns, look at that spring of 24, and that's where they are. of columns, look at that spring of 24, and that's where they are, students ended each year. And you can see from this, there is a declining trend, which in this instance is good. It's a good thing. This is per, per the assessment, the number of, the number, the percentage of students that would be recommended for interventions. So the better our tier one instruction is, the less students we have that would come up on this assessment as being recommended for interventions. And even on top of that, the better our tier two and tier three interventions are with students that we're working closely with, they would eventually move across that back into tier one ideally, or stay in a quality tier two intervention, and they would continue to see those numbers drop. So you can see significant improvements from, over the last several years. It is fortunate that we have been taking the same assessment to be able to make those comparisons year over year. It really helps determine the health of the system. And so all students from spring of 21 were at, 48% of our students were recommended for intervention. And what that means in the test, I, it says it here, but I should mention explicitly, you're recommended for interventions if you score in language arts below the 30th percentile in English or below the 40th percentile in Spanish. That's how those tests are normed across. So we had 48% of our students in spring of 21 and had 30% of our students in spring of 24. So you can see a very, pretty consistent decrease in overall, in that population and in all of our student populations. And so just to point out some of those gains, so that, that's an 18% over the last four years, but 10% of that was actually made from that last year to this year. So 10 of those points was made just last year. And so in African American, we have a movement of 12% overall, 11%, 11 of those were made just last year. And so last year, I know we've talked about this quite a bit, last year we had a significant investment in high-quality instructional materials and started with some trainings. This year we're going even further into that. So we'll talk about that later more, when we talk about root causes and we talk about our strategies. So in some of our student populations, I'd like to point out, even just in our special education population, moved 22% over the last four years, but 21% of that was just from last year. So our largest gains in, in our most underserved populations are really, we're really starting to see a difference there. We're starting to see, especially in last year to this year, a change in how many students are, would be recommended for interventions per the screener. And so also, just to mention too, since this is the first time we've talked about this goal, it seems like a little bit of an odd goal because we're only going from 30% to 29%. So what we'd like to do, of course, is meet that and exceed it. But what we really want to pay attention to is not really just how all the overall students are doing, but how our most underserved students are really moving the needle and how we're making changes for those student groups. So what we want to do is reach that 29% and even more, but we want our most underserved student groups to be the ones making the movement to make that change in the overall score. So that is really what we're looking for as we, as we report this data. And so looking into our, our root causes, one of which we, we've certainly discussed, these are, many of these we discussed last year at the end of year, and these are, are far-reaching and significant. And so you'll see them stay the same for a while, because it takes not only time, but effort to really be able to affect change and root causes that go back for quite some time. So we've seen in our classroom observations, surveys that we've had, but also in our instructional review that we conducted in the spring, very inconsistent use of research-based instructional materials. So those are high-quality instructional materials. And there is national agreement. We had the opportunity, we'll hear more from her with the math presentation, but our STEM director, elementary STEM director was invited to present at a national conference. And there is national agreement that high-quality instructional materials are, it's an equity issue. And so variability in our classrooms and not providing research-based materials and having materials that have students on grade level all day, every day, is an equity issue. And providing teachers with those resources and helping them feel comfortable with those resources means that students will not only be, we believe that our students can do it, but we give them the resources to, to perform on grade level. And then provide interventions and scaffolds as necessary as our students, and we have meetings about our students to really determine who needs additional targeted or intensive interventions. But it all starts with that, that grade-level expectation and belief that our students can do this with these high-quality instructional materials. So we've had inconsistent use of those. We've provided them. Sometimes we've made some changes over the years. That always affects a teacher's ability to really be able to deliver research-based materials in a, in a high-quality way. And so we really, with that inconsistent use, it's really affected many of our students and our student populations. We've, and I do want to take a moment, if I may, to talk about high-quality instructional materials. There's some misunderstanding in the field about it right now because there's some misimplementation, I think, happening in a few places on high-quality instructional materials. That feels more like we'll walk in and we expect every teacher to look the same and sound the same and be on the same lesson at the same day. And while I can't argue that that's happening in some other districts, that is not the expectation at Austin ISD. And we have communicated nothing around that expectation. And as a matter of fact, we have really started to communicate and start working, we'll start working with PLC leads more, to talk about the art of how you deliver research-based materials. So we, it is, it is the art and science of teaching. While we have to move with the science of teaching, because we're a science, research-based field, we have to go with the research. And there's a science to what we do. There's an art to what we do as well. So how you deliver, how a team decides what exactly to deliver and what to focus on for the students they have in the classroom at that time, is that art of teaching and using teams and PLC conversations to truly get better at that. And so that's what we mean when we say high-quality instructional materials. I just wanted to set that, that definition for Austin ISD out front. And so along with high-quality instructional materials, we've seen some inconsistent implementation of research-based literacy practices. And so those are the practices and the pieces and the scheduling and the parts of, of literacy that go along with instructional materials, but this is more just the pedagogy of it. And so, for example, I may see a teacher that is in a classroom and observed this recently, teacher in, last year, a teacher in a classroom that used a high-quality text to have a discussion with students, and then followed up with the question of what was your favorite part? And while that is a high-quality text, the practice of a lower-level question is not a strong research-based practice, right? So that, that kind of thing is what we have to marry as well, not just with the materials, but how we as a educational system are truly delivering them and, and including the pedagogy of literacy-based practices. So lacking a comprehensive, multi-tiered system, I've seen this a lot, we've talked about our MTSS systems, not that we didn't have anything, it was just the difference of having things and having a truly comprehensive and aligned system. And so seeing that many, many campuses had different resources, different ways of, of working through the MTSS, different ways of identifying students and all of that, we just, we, that, that affects a campus's overall ability and a, and a school system's overall ability to truly give students what they need when they're struggling with the content. And then finally, we have a lack of, of aligned observation coaching and feedback structures. And so we have many people, many talented people in our district that are working on coaching structures and that coach in different manners and, and different ways to leaders and to teachers, and everyone was using something different. And so by the time you get to the classroom, you may have worked with an instructional coach, you may have worked with a mentor teacher, you may have worked with an assistant principal, and you may have worked with someone on my team. And they've all coached you and told you something a little bit different, and they've all used a little bit different way to give you feedback. And so that, that will cause confusion and that will cause a, a lack of implementation at the, at the teacher level and at the campus level as well. Campus leaders are receiving very different ways of, of coaching and feedback for what was happening for them. And so that, that causes those, that misalignment causes very different structures and very different student outcomes across our system.
So thank you, everyone. I would like to talk about where some of the strategies that we, we were putting in as, as a district. And as you know, Dr. Maxwell just talked about like some of the root causes. And so we realize I would, I would like to begin to address inconsistencies of use of research-based instructional materials and literacy instructions. We implemented a strategy to realign the curriculum with documents with high-quality instructional materials, which is evident-based practice rooted on the science of reading. So this is what happens. The Elementary Humanity Department, along with the Multilingual Team Department, revisited and refined the curriculum to ensure that foundational reading skills such as phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and language comprehension are explicitly taught using structured, explicit, and systematic approaches in each language. So in other words, just like she was saying, the materials are there, but it's the pedagogy or how it is presented in each classroom. So we want that rigor and the explicit and systematic sequence of the instruction presented. Along with that, we realign instructional materials such as using our HMH as our tier one adopted resource as a reading of these research-based methods, especially with our new structured literacy lessons in K2. Our teachers ensure that the literacy structure is consistently and effective across all classrooms and kindergarten through fifth grade. In addition, in our dual-language programs, we provided a biliacy curriculum that includes cross-linguistic connection lessons, which are vital for our dual-language program as we promote bilingualism and biliacy to explicitly teach a student's knowledge in one language to another. So saying that, we also have the lessons that we provide to students, it is not like an scripted lesson. In other words, our lessons are provided to be support. What I want to do is even for our novice, even for our veteran teachers, being able to have the lessons that leverage them to have the opportunity to teach explicit and systematic. We know that in our field, we're constantly training teachers, but we, it is important for us to provide a lessons where they don't have to spend hours and hours creating when we can provide in the curriculum. Also the realignment of these, you can find them on our unit plan organizers in both languages. Our unit organizers are structured, are structured tools that guide educators in design and implement effective instruction. And it's also there aligned for the four PLC questions. So I would like to begin to say that when our teachers get the unit planet organizers, what we call them UPOs, we start with the first question. Why do we want our students to know and able to do? This section contains the standards and learning objectives. It is important because ensures the curriculum is aligned with educational goals and benchmarks. The standards provide clear expectations that the students should know and able to do at the end of each unit. At the same time, learning objectives are brought down to the standards to measure their goal and achievement. So these students are able to measure and set goals unit by unit. Then our units, our, our UPO has a second question that it says, how will we know if the students have learned the content? This section contains our unit assessments, which are essential because they provide a way to measure student learning, track progress, and inform instructional decisions. And our daily reading lessons of HMH have been carefully reviewed and pasted to be effective, bring strategies and content so that our teachers are able to progress, monitor the students' needs, and be able to address whenever they need to. Along with that, our UPOs comes with the last third and fourth question. And this is a very important, important question. How will we respond when the students do not learn the content? And what will, how will extend the learning for the students who have demonstrated proficiency? Our team worked very hard this summer to put together a section what is called the differentiation of small group instruction that goes for every unit. During this section, we provide instruction to address diverse learning needs for all the students in English and Spanish. In any classroom, students have varied ways of styles of learning, and we have provided that so that the teachers have met all the student needs. We want to make sure that we are providing and giving them, the teachers, the opportunity to have the autonomy using the art of the science with the pedagogy like Dr. Maxwell explained. This is a place where we don't want our teachers to spend most of their time searching for other resources. As an educator and as a bilingual former educator, you can spend hours searching and translating resources. We have gathered and curated and carefully put all our resources in there to give the teachers the opportunity to spend their time really analyzing what they need, looking at their students, and provide that for them. To address another thing, another strategy that we have done is the content of the pedagogy and professional learning. This is a part when we are trying to provide professional development to equip leaders to understand literacy and how to teach it. Along with the science of reading, we are certified all K3 administrators and teachers on the Texas Reading Academies. They're also equipped with the knowledge and skills that they need to teach foundational skills effectively on the ELR and the biliacy pathway. The reading academies are critical because they provide teachers and administrators with evident-based practice rooted in the science of reading, ensuring that they're all prepared to teach skills such as phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and reading based on the language of the instruction. This is very important that in the early age, our students are developed essential literacy that impact for future academic success. So by doing this, we continue to support. One of the things that we have done for professional development is we have been training for the past three years on reading academies. But this is how the state have provided us, which was a blended program where we all blending everyone with a computer. One of the biggest shift that the state has done these years is that we are providing professional development in face-to-face. It's called a comprehensive model where we have our specialist literacy coaches going on campuses and providing on-demand one-on-one for caution, for coaching sessions to our teachers along with our curriculum. The next strategy is talked about, about how we are going to target the, target interventions and strategies aligned with the data collection of the multi-tiered system support on reading. By carefully analyzing a student performance, administrators and teachers can effectively identify those who have additional support beyond tier one instruction. We have provided high-quality instructional materials for reading for tier two and tier three interventions in English and Spanish, to ensure that the students at all levels receive a tailored evident-based support. This evidence helps to close the gap by focusing on a specific student needs, such as foundational skills and language comprehension. Our administrators and teachers are committed to continuing monitor and progress monitor and making data-driven decisions to adjust strategies and interventions, ensuring that all the students receive the necessary support that they need for literacy outcomes. So we have specifically provide those materials so that they can support in both languages. And last and the least, this is the part where we are created classroom implementations through observation and coaching and feedback using the common tool. This is essential for providing and implementing the literacy practice into classroom. Using a structured observation tool like the MTS literacy classroom walkthrough, it is an instructional, for instructional leaders can gain a valuable insight of how a K5 literacy classroom look like for tier one, but also for a tier two and three interventions. This tool is aligned with the AISD definition of excellence by literacy instruction, ensuring that educators are equipped to deliver high-quality teaching. The literacy walkthrough forms to include specific indicators for foundational skills and reading comprehension and biliacy, acknowledging that these instructional strategies must be deferred and as support all the areas. So by doing this, we have created a systematic support to continue to train our administrators, our teachers, our instructional coaches, our areas, our support people, and all our leaders on our system, including our teams, our med department, with our special education department, we're all coming together to make sure that we're providing enough tools to provide professional development to implement the curriculum.
So good evening. I'm going to share some of our leadership strategies that are really just focusing on research-based best practices. Some of those best practices are new to us as an organization, and some are just practices that we've not implemented consistently or with fidelity across the district. And so as Liliana just mentioned, we have our newly-developed MTSS and literacy walkthrough tools. And they're really designed to align our practices so that when any leader in the district, campus and district letter, level leadership visits a campus, we all have the same look fours. And those look fours, again, are based on what we know to be best practices based on research. And we're also making sure that we're looking for practices that are developed And we're also making sure that we're looking for practices that are developmentally appropriate and, again, research-based. And this tool is especially important. I was debriefing with a group of principals a few weeks ago about the reading academies and their experience with the reading academies. And we hear a lot from principals and also from teachers that it happened so quickly, right? It became almost a compliance thing to get the 60 hours in and really not implementing or practicing the learning in real time. And we know with any learner, if you take in information, but you don't have the opportunity to apply it in real time, there is a learning loss. And then you go to try to implement it later, and it was like, what was that I learned? And how do I apply it? And so as Dr. Maxwell mentioned, we spent a lot of time over the last month aligning our resources, our look-for tools, and also our professional learning around the contents of the reading academies. And it was also important for us to pair the walkthrough tools with the coaching protocol. It's really ideal that your observation and feedback tools are paired with the intent of coaching. So the goal is to develop a culture of coaching for growth versus observing classrooms for just for compliance. And so that is a bit of a challenge because I know that teachers, you know, you go to your classroom, you close the door, and it's just you, right? And every teacher works hard, and you want to do the best for your kids. And so what we're really trying to do is convey a message to teachers that when your administrator comes in, they come in for support, they come in to help you grow in the area that you've identified. That's also a practice that Dr. Maxwell and I try to take to campuses when we visit. We were able to visit the team at Pickle yesterday or the day before, and we joined their ILT, their leadership team, and sort of a debrief after we walked classrooms. And we walked away with some next steps for us, right? And so we didn't just join them to say, here are things that you need to do. It's important for us that as we notice trends across the district, when we notice some systemic challenges, that comes back to us. That means there's a resource we didn't provide, a training we didn't provide, an expectation that we were not clear about for teachers and sometimes for leaders, right? And so, again, a culture of coaching is ideal when you think about the observation and feedback cycle. We are also, as mentioned before, really focusing on professional learning communities. I reached out to a number of our principals that are consistently the outliers when you look at data and just asked them, like, what if you could only advise a principal that's looking to accomplish what you're accomplishing, just three immediate action steps, what would you recommend? And every one of those principals referenced their PLCs, and not just professional learning communities for the sake of having them, but having professional learning communities with intentionality. And so as Dr. Maxwell mentioned, we are now training professional PLC leads from each of our campuses. It's unique to the campus, the representative that they send. And we've opened it up for lead teachers, instructional coaches, administrators, and we're providing the lead training based on the grade level and the content area so that there's not one teacher overwhelmed with leading all of the PLCs. And so that is new, and that is in response to campuses that are still struggling with having effective PLCs and some that aren't struggling, they just want some additional strategies as to how to make their PLCs even more effective. And so we also need to continue refining our organization's understanding of research-based early literacy practices and the why around those. So something that has been recently brought to our attention is the phase-out of three queuing, and that's really teaching students to read based on context versus decoding, right? And so that was a practice up until pretty recently was acceptable. And so I mentioned to principals, I think last month, about not using DRAs anymore, and it was like a knife in the heart, right? And so those are some things that you go to campuses and you can have teachers say, well, I've always used this, I've always taught my kids to read. But three-queuing isn't acceptable any longer, and neither are any of the resources associated with that. But what I, as I reflect, what we've not done is really communicated that to teachers and to leaders in depth as to why there was a shift from three-queuing to the science of reading. So again, it's important that as the teachers are learning and the principals are learning, we're also learning and learning how to take the feedback and revise our support and realize where more information is needed as to why some things have to happen and then why some things have to discontinue. And so with that, we also have our MTSS system, which is providing support for teachers and helping to identify students in need of intervention, but not just that a student needs additional support, exactly where to target the support, like, where are the exact gaps where I need to start intervening? And we have found a lot of our teachers have embraced the training that they received last week at our MTSS conference. We were visiting a campus, actually TA Brown, the same day that we went to Pickle. So shout out to Ms. Banda, Ms. Bonda, the first-grade teacher, dual-language teacher at TA Brown. She had already started to turn around her learning from last Thursday around interventions. And so we were able to sit and watch her conduct the initial screener to see where her student was going to enter the interventions. And then last, but not least, I am excited that we are able this week to send our first literacy newsletter to families. It has been a long work in progress with a lot of feedback and collaboration across a number of departments, including special ed, our met team members, communications, and it's just been an effort from all of us. And so what I love about the newsletter is that it's very practical for parents, right? So there's a range. It includes like, what's my student learning? And there's some very, like, technical pieces, but there are also pieces that you can ask your student as you're making dinner. There is a section for parents, like, here's, what question should I ask my child's teacher about their learning this month? And so it's, again, we have wanted to put it out for a while, but making sure that it was something that was actually useful and met the various needs of our families was very important. So we're a couple of months, I think, after what we intended, but we wanted to get it out by parent conference day so that parents can see during the conference what the newsletter is. We didn't want it to just appear in their inbox, or they have a hard copy, just put it in the backpack. But we wanted to give the campuses an opportunity to walk through the newsletter with parents at an upcoming principal's coffee, at PTA meetings, and again, to really capitalize on parent conference week next week for elementary schools with the newsletter. And then we got feedback from principals as to how we could best roll it out. And so we, you know, we are aware that some parents want it in their email box, and then others do need to have it in their child's folder. And so those are all of the leadership strategies that we are implementing, some new and some continuation from last year. And now we'll take any questions.
Thank you. So much good information. So we will now open the floor for our monitoring conversation. As a reminder, we have questions that are of technical or tactical nature before. We've asked these questions before tonight's meetings, and those questions and their answers are posted within the agenda materials for the public to see. Our questions during the meeting will be more strategic in nature, and we have our purple sheets up here as well to help guide us in those per our LSG training. And those will help us understand how the reality for our students is aligning with our vision. So trustees, what are your questions?
Trustee, what lead you? Thank you. So evidence-based practices were referred to a lot. Can you tell us specifically what evidence-based practices are being used and what the evidence is or where I could refer to that or our community could?
So typically, when we talk about evidence-based practices, it's a combination of not just what the research says about it, but whether or not it's actually working for our students. And so when we implement some practices and then our observations of what's happening in the classrooms and then reports from teachers, campuses, things like that, and in the groups and the meetings that we have with them, regular meetings, we find that things are working or things aren't working. And so that's kind of what builds that evidence base. Try to keep that. And then there's certainly evidence-based practices that are referred to research, but we also try to do a good job of looking at what that is in our own district. And so is your question specific to what are some evidence-based literacy practices?
I would say my request is in future presentations that we don't use that word and just if we have evidence of something to present that or if it's based on certain research to cite that research.
That your request is to not use the phrase evidence-based?
Just not to generally use it if we don't have, like, what is, you know, I'd like to see the evidence and see the research, or else it just kind of seems like we're calling something an evidence-based practice. So that would be helpful.
Sure.
And the HMH curriculum, what research points at that as being an evidence-based practice?
Would you like us to submit all of the research behind HMH?
I think that could be, that would be helpful.
Okay, I think, because that's a pretty long list, and so we could submit that. Absolutely.
But I do think it's important that we note that HMH is our district's adopted curriculum, right? And so that's the resource that every campus has because as a district, that's the resource that we committed to providing based on the screener and the qualifications that it was HQIM and based on, and again, based on research and on a list of approved materials.
And then if we have, if there are instructors that have evidence that they have been using practices that work and they are successful in teaching reading, are those instructors being required to use something else or adopt something differently?
No, the requirement is actually not by teacher, it's by the campus. And the expectation for each campus is that they are using HQIM, a high-quality instructional material, that there's a range of resources. And so the way that campus has opted out of HMH is that they simply made a request and said, here is the resource that my campus would like to use. There is a rubric to determine if a resource is considered HQIM. So it's not our rubric, it's a rubric, you know, from TEA and other agencies or entities. And so once the principal was able to explain how their requested resource met those guidelines, they're also required to explain to us that they have a system in place for supporting their teachers with professional learning for the HQIM and that they're able to secure those materials on their own, right? Because those are not provided by the district. And once they're able to verify that those things are happening, then they're able to opt into the resource of their choosing. Right now, sitting like off the top of my head, I can think of at least six resources being used by campuses across the district in addition to HMH. Some are using HMH for foundational skills, but they're using a different resource for comprehension. And so, again, we required HMH because we are required to require HMH, I'm sorry, required to use HQIM. And so any resource that does fit that rubric is something that we didn't, I mean, we didn't push back on those. Now, are our teachers able to go to the classroom and just use a resource of their choosing? I would say no to that because an important part of the science of reading is that the instruction's systematic. And so if you have different teachers using different resources, then you provide an opportunity for gaps. And I'll give you like a real-life scenario. So at one of our PLCs that is a pretty high-functioning PLC, they were talking more about the hell, like, what does the instruction look like? And so one grade level was teaching hand signs, hand gestures for vowel sounds, right? And so the first-grade teachers had one symbol, the second-grade teachers had a different symbol or a different sign, and the kindergarten teachers had different gestures. So now if you think of a child that is learning to read, and with first grade, my oh sound is ah, this is my sound, then I go to the next grade level, and the teacher has this as a gesture, it becomes very confusing. And so that's why it's important, again, for each campus to have a systematic plan for their campus.
So this is a very high-structured degree of standardization and lack of autonomy for the professional educator, classroom teacher?
So I think, you know, we've talked a lot about wanting to provide the resources for our educators to meet them where they are. And we've acknowledged, I think, as a team and I think as a collective whole, that there are lots of educators that need different levels of support. And so the approach that was taken is, as Dr., as Lakeisha said, you have to have foundational curriculum, and this curriculum was an expansion from, I think, prior years, but in 2023, it was brought forward again in March, I guess, I would say, spring of 2023. And so we wanted to create flexibility for our campuses to select what was the best for them, but as long as it met the requirements as set by TEA. We acknowledge that, and I think Dr. Maxwell said this before, that we want educators to be able to leverage the resources they have and practice.
Leverage the resources, the limited resources they're required to use now by state law? Is that?
They are approved by TEA. We, that's, yeah. I mean, that's, at the end of the day, that's what we have, that's what we have to follow.
But yeah, this is a big, this is a big shift. Like, is there concern about our most talented, creative teachers feeling too constrained and by this environment that is coming down from the state? And harming our literacy rates?
I would like to respond to your question. I know that the House Bill III, according to the legislature and Texas Code, it has prohibited the three-queuing system like Ms. Trinks was talking about. And what it is, is it's an approach of teaching our children to read for decades, assuming that we are trying to guess rather than teaching them the sounds of the letters and the symbols to truly teach them how to code. So research knows, and I love Michelangelo quote, when he says, when you know better, we do better. And so we are trying to teach through the reading academies, the pedagogy, what you were talking about, evidence-based practices, practices that are truly research-based for multiple of research out there, that teaching the codes, how to teach the code to the childrens to decode, we're going to create proficient readers. Now, there is a science, and there is also an art. So the state has given us approved documents of resources, like resource, highly-quality instructional resources that we can materials purchase, and we are, by the state, required to provide a phonics program that is, that meets the state. Now, there is several products, and we have allowed the districts, in other words, to continue to support, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're truly teaching the kids how to read. Because at the end of the day, we want to set our kids for success, and we want to teach the best practices to support them, but keeping within the art, but within the science of the art, teaching them.
And we do see some teachers finding a space for a little more creativity in the comprehension piece, more than the foundational piece, because the foundational piece, again, it's very explicit. That's, and that's the part of, you know, the science of reading is that it's explicit systematic instruction, like, that is pretty much the definition. But when you move into the comprehension piece, there's a little more flexibility in the text that you select, making sure that, you know, it's authentic, that it's relevant to the students that you're engaging. And so as we talk to principals and to teachers as to like where they're able to find those moments of creativity, it really is more in the comprehension piece. Because, again, the foundations piece is the foundations piece, and there are not a lot of, there's not a lot we can give in that space based on what's required of us.
And then we shouldn't be in foundation for a really long time.
Thirty minutes, max.
Or even, you know, for years and years and years. You know, this should be You know, this should be something that we, you know, students get the phonemic awareness, the fluency. And then I, I would say also making sure we as a district have a definition of the science of reading because that's also a word that's being, it's a term that's being thrown around and used a lot by different businesses when, you know, it's, you know, supposed to not be a product that you can buy or a specific intervention. Or, and it's not something that is complete and decided, something that's being studied. So making sure we just have a definition for everything we're talking about. And, you know, I thank you for your presentation. It's, it's a, it's a tough environment to be working in right now.
I think one of the challenges that we've been navigating over the last 18 months is how to create resources district-wide and enough autonomy and then have enough certainty that the way it's being implemented is, can be confirmed to be in alignment with TEA because that's how we're going to get checked. That's, and so that's why we made sure that campuses could opt out. Because we recognize that it's not going, we, campuses need to have that flexibility. I think what you're describing, Trissy Willie Chu, is something that we would have to really understand. You know, and then there'd have to be something that helps us really consider what that looks like campus by campus. One of the things that we talk about is high mobility rates of students. And as students move from one campus to another campus to another campus, making sure that there is something familiar in the curriculum. So we need to kind of strike that balance, be compliant, and ensure that our educators are supported as professionals and have, can embrace the art that is educating. And I think right now there's just a lot of constraints that we have to navigate through. But we look forward to continued conversation for sure.
We'll just go down the line if that's okay, Trissy Lugo?
No, if we could skip.
Secretary Boswell?
Yeah, thank you for all of this, I appreciate it. I have one data question that I didn't ask before the meeting because it didn't come to me before the meeting that I just want to be really clear on. If we go to GPM 1.1, slide number four. And it's really a question about how the MAP test is measuring. I just want to be really sure we're looking at real growth and not just a different cohort of second graders who had different impacts from the pandemic. Is it measuring that year's second graders comparing our second graders to a national set of second graders? So it is truly a percentile? Or is it some theoretical percentile that kids who were really impacted by COVID weren't going to meet? And now kids at a different, on a different trajectory at a different age are closer to some norm? Is that answerable? Is my question even making sense?
I think so, and so.
Makes sense in my head, but maybe not out here.
This is, and I, I don't know that I did the best job explaining that. But this is, what we're seeing here, for example, in the spring of '24 is 30% of our students scored below the 30th or 40th percentile, depending on the language, compared to all other second-grade students who took that test in spring of '24.
Who took that very test in the spring of '24?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that is helpful to see. I just wanted to be sure we weren't seeing some theoretical percentile that they established years ago. And, okay, so it is that testing period, okay, that is helpful to see. And I have a question about when we have the beginning of year data available. This is really just a question for the board and, and the superintendent about, is this the right time to be monitoring this data if we don't have the beginning of the year? And seven weeks in, when can we expect the beginning of the year? Because it's not quite beginning anymore, I know it takes time to compile and process and do that. Are we talking about this at the right time? Or do we need to bump it a month? Like what do you think would be most helpful?
I, I think there's an opportunity to revisit the monitoring calendar. I, I do want to acknowledge that, you know, we, we were thoughtful about how we laid out the calendar, acknowledging that the time constraints would have to be managed across all the months. And so we would have to, to kind of think through, because this is going to continue to happen. I mean, I, I think that's, that's, you know, we get data, we synthesize it, we go through the analysis, we provide, create the presentations, we upload the presentations, and all of that takes time. And so I think that's a, there's an opportunity to kind of see, you know, based on the cycle that we're in, this is the first year we're going through it, if there are adjustments that need to be made so that we can present beginning of year, you know, at the beginning of the year. This is one of those ones that we actually get it, but we get it in between, you know, preparing for the submission and presentation. And there's a lot of those, given how the sequence of the board meetings go in the fall semester. But yeah, I think there's an opportunity to explore that.
Okay, thank you for that. And, and do you feel like there would be valuable information to share with us? That would help us kind of redirect or understand better? Help kind of us understand where things are going? Not that we're redirecting, but kind of as a system that would be useful to kind of share publicly in this way, monitor in this way? Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
And at the next, at the, the next GPM, you will have the beginning of year.
Right, right.
So.
But it won't be for a long time, so.
But for the, yeah, but for the Matthew, so that's, you're right, we're close on, we're really on the edge right now.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you. And so just something I think for us to think about as we talk about a calendar next year in collaboration with board and administration. And then I have one more question. I know we've spent a lot of time talking about differentiation and tier-two and tier-three instruction and that first teach and kids who aren't there. But I know, I mean, I'll go back to my own kids and my son's kindergarten class. His closest friend had read The Hobbit to himself when kindergarten started and my kid didn't know all of his letters. And there was everything in between. And I had brought my child with chalk letters, we had tried everything we could and that was just not his thing at the time, so. And he caught up and he's an amazing reader now and he reads tons of novels and it's great. But it, it, teachers were there kind of serving that whole class. And, and that direct phonics instruction for my son was very important. And for some other kids was for the kid who had already read The Hobbit. And there were, he was, you know, there were a lot of kids in there who were already reading books to themselves. How do we differentiate there? And how does the first teach look when they're kids who are really going to be honestly bored by that? I mean, how do we navigate that differentiation across such a vast scale? Especially as our kids are coming in in those first couple of years before they kind of all start getting on a similar page and, and that kind of reading to learn versus learning to read when you've already learned to read?
Right, that, that's definitely a challenge. I, I can speak as a recovering kindergarten teacher that you get a wide range that first year, especially when it's their first year at school. And so what we do, at least in our guidance for teachers and in our curriculum documents, is we, we do pay attention. When you're using a new resource, it takes a little bit longer to get accustomed to it. But we do pay attention to making sure that direct instruction for the whole class is, is only limited to a certain time and that we do have intentional time for students working either themselves or with partners and they're reading or they're doing activities that are appropriate to them. So there is a lot of student-driven learning and student, level-appropriate learning at that time. And I will also say, I was at a campus, I don't remember if it was Monday or probably Tuesday, and there was a kindergarten teacher teaching the letter G and I was engaged. And I know G pretty well. But she was just so engaging, every single student was involved. She was animated and she was teaching about the sound of G, things that started, and then went into G handwriting. And I just wanted to go up there and try my own G and see how well I did with the students. It was really a great lesson. And so, you know, our, our, our teachers, they, they work so hard and, and work just day in and day out to really make everything that they do engaging. So it could be that a student, even though they know their sounds and they are reading The Hobbit, excellent book by the way, then they, they are still engaged in lessons like that because it's something fun that they're doing with their peers at that time. It lasts for a short time and then they move on to something else.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, yes. Excellent book and tons for a five-year-old. And excellent, but he was six. And so what I'm hearing is that there, the direct instruction is, is a limited period of time. That gives that opportunity for differentiation, gives that opportunity for all students wherever they are to get the support they need or have the opportunity for that growth if they don't need that extra, they need support in a different way. Okay, thank you.
And also there are some other strategies, right? Like having students like test out, like you can use some of their data and realize like, maybe their time is better spent, you know, on a book study. It is a little harder with five-year-olds. But as students are older, you are able to implement a little bit of those other strategies. And we, this, while this has been a challenging time for us in, in many different ways, has also been an opportunity. It's presented a lot of opportunities. And so one thing that we are doing now that we've not done so much in the past is really partnering with our advanced academics team to come in and provide some additional training to our leaders so that they're able to go back and support their teachers with some strategies around what you've just described. And when I say advanced academic, we're very intentional that it doesn't mean that it's GT. It means any student that needs enrichment at that moment, we have a plan for those students. And so we have Dr. Sev visiting our elementary principals in two weeks at our next level meeting to talk about what that does look like.
Thank you.
And then also our curriculum, when the differentiating, part of the instruction, we have teamed up with the academic teams and they have created board and activities to accelerate and support those students that are on or above grade level within the curriculum as well. So that the teachers can utilize those strategies to support the students that they are at that level of understanding or above the grade level when they get there.
And those are based on the HMH curriculum just in a different?
No, those are base activities that we have added. So that there is a collection of activities that have been, but supporting with the same thinking, the same fix within the grade level, but we're providing and extending their learning to challenge our students.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for this. So I had a couple of questions. One was thinking about, you had mentioned, Ms. Rinks, I think it was you, that said some campuses opt out of using the curriculum, the HMH curriculum. And can you share with us why that is and how that relate, how that, if you guys have seen any patterns of how like different curricula might relate back to actual student outcomes?
Yeah, so we, we have some campuses that we're already implementing an HQIM other than HMH with, with success. When, you know, you look at their student data, they typically were our outliers. I do think it's important to say that opting out was not contingent upon like the letter grade the school was receiving or what cohort you were in. So we, we have some of our schools that have struggled academically that have opted out because they have partnerships and grants that allow them to provide, provide professional learning. And then we have schools that have traditionally performed well that have opted out as well. And so again, typically the campuses, the pattern is the ones that have opted out, already had a system in place, they already have their resources, they'd already invested a significant amount of time and resources in training and they already had, had a moving system. I will say some of our principals entertained opting out. But to give credit to the academics team sitting beside me, once their team started to dive in and really look at the resources that were made available, they decided like, why opt out? You know, like we have everything here for us. And then they, they made the decision to use HMH. A big piece or a big incentive that we gave for using HMH, and it wasn't really an incentive because we necessarily want to make campuses do it. We have 78 elementary schools and, and we have limited support for those schools. And so it becomes difficult when you have 10, 15 different curriculum resources to help provide training to teachers. And the newsletter that we're providing to parents is, it's really around the scope and sequence of HMH. And so when all of those supports were made, were provided to the, the campuses and we explained how those were to work, then campuses that really didn't have a systematic approach to instruction decided that they wanted to, to join us with HMH. And again, those that really already had a system decided to opt out. Does that?
Yeah, that's helpful. And so I was curious to do, so if a campus opts out, do they have to find the funding for a new curriculum? And is that typically coming from PTAs? Is that coming from grants or is that coming from?
Title I budgets, again, it's, Pacoan Springs has a partnership. They applied and received a grant, so they have a partnership with Region 13 that provides PD for their teachers. They come out and help facilitate PLCs, like all of those, the supports. And it's really about supporting the teachers with implementing whatever it is that you decide you're going to use on your campus, again, as long as it is, as it's an HQIM.
Okay, thank you. And then, you know, as I, as I'm going back and looking at the actual second-grade reading teaks, I noticed that, like the phonics development is just one part of it. You know, there's a whole bunch of other stuff. Things like, you know, you know, asking relevant questions to clarify information. You know, some of that comprehension factors that you were discussing before. You know, so it's, it's the decoding, but it's also like applying what they're learning. And so I'm just wondering how, like how, like how much of the curriculum is spent on decoding and how much of it is spent on the other components?
The decoding part, we have structured the minute mid, like it depends grade level by grade level. So the decoding in the primary grades like K2 is very, the time is longer than it is from three to five. Because we're learning to read and reading to learn. And so the language comprehension applies for both the grade levels. But if you are an early literacy K2, your block of foundational skills is much longer. But also we continue read alouds to develop vocabulary and develop oracy and develop understanding of the language and comprehension. When we get in the upper grades, the time, it's, it's more into the grammar and the decoding is still in there, but the minutes are shorter. And then there's more time on the writing and the reading comprehension. So it is at the, the times graduate, starting from kindergarten all the way to fifth grade. And also we want to make sure that we are providing the students with the knowledge of building knowledge. Research shows and one of the things about science reading is that we don't want to just teach the decoding piece. And that's kind of taken out of context that we just want to teach phonics all the time, but we forget about the read alouds and the reading comprehension. And that's what the language develops. Especially if you are a multilingual learner and learning to languages, you have to develop language by reading literature. And so that's so important in all grade levels. And it's something we don't want to take away. And so the teacher is the one reading and accessing the literature in the lower grades for the student but building these amazing conversations and building the knowledge that we're actually building them for success. If we only teach phonics, then we're not doing the whole piece, right? Like it's just one section and not the other. And they're both built from each other. And it is a whole part of the question of the simple viewer reading, talks about how is the decoding piece and the language comprehension to create really readers that comprehend when we're reading literature.
I appreciate that. And as, you know, I think Trissy Willie Chu kind of alluded to this, but the idea is you want the kids to learn that foundational stuff quickly so that they can get on to the fun stuff quickly as well, right? And so I think one fear that I have is, you know, when we're just making such tiny incremental change year to year, it's like those kids are like, you know, some kids might need longer, like longer time to grasp the phonics. But there's only a certain number of hours in a day and so they're missing out on all the comprehension and the rich experiences that you can have with learning. And so I'm trying to get my head around like, is this, like what's the fastest, like what's the most efficient way that we can get the phonics part taught? And I keep going back to literacy first. And when I, again, I just pulled up their, their report that they sent us in June. And there, in our own schools, the literacy-first students are making improvements on phonemic awareness and other phonics areas, like more than twice the rate of non-literacy-first students. Which means they're going to get to the fun stuff, the fun part of reading, twice as quickly. And so I'm just like, how, I want to understand better. Like how do we know that the approach that we're doing here, like we're doing a lot everywhere versus, you know, a very targeted type of effort for the kids who need it the most? Like how do we know as a system what's going to get our kids where they need to be the quickest?
With the literacy first though, and then I'll let um, Dr. Max will take um over for getting in the weeds of the work. It's okay. Our literacy first focuses on a particular cohort of students. And so those students are almost right at the edge or on target of meeting their skill set. So it is a different cohort of students. When we're talking about students that have larger, larger gaps, obviously they're going to need tier two, sometimes potentially tier three instruction. So although I think literacy first has done some amazing work, absolutely, they are serving different cohorts of students. They may not always necessarily be serving tier two and tier three students.
I just um wish phonics didn't have such a bad rap. It um, it really, uh, and I, and I gave an example earlier, but I have many, many years of examples of, of really great engaging, fun phonics instruction for, for students. And when you, the other part of that is when you teach it explicitly and systematically and it goes well in your classroom in an engaging way, then students frequently experience the same joy when they unlock the decoding and start to be successful as independent readers. And you see that happen and that progression happen. When you see that happen, then they, they experience just as much joy with that piece as they do with very rich read alouds, with stories that um relate to them that do, and you mentioned, you know, relevant and higher level questioning and, and all of those opportunities as well. They really do go hand in hand. Phonics itself is, and as Ms. Kendrick explained, is really designed to be a quicker, um, more uh routine part of the day. And so inserting engaging pieces and games and all of the things that, that we do to make it enjoyable for students is really a critical piece. But it's, it's, a- as students are younger, they just need more time with it. Many, many of our students do. And, and I, I, I want to continue to, um, you know, for, for us as a system to look at our student outcomes when we do start focusing on instruction that way, especially from our most underserved populations and the difference that that, that really explicit and systematic instruction makes for those students.
Thank you. Yeah, and I, I mean, and so just to be clear, I'm, I'm not against the phonics instruction. I'm just saying like even within the phonics instruction, like we have such a limited budget. Like we're doing a whole tax rate election because like we need money to make sure our kids meet student outcomes, right? And so I, we've just got to, like, I'm just like, how do, how do I know as a trustee that every dollar is being spent in a way that's going to get the most um out of our students and the quickest? And, and like, I just, like, I'm looking at these graphs and, and literacy first is about phonics instruction. But even there, when you're comparing the kids, I mean, you're right next to me, so you can see like the blue line is literacy first and the red line is AISD students who qualify for literacy first, but don't do it. Like, why wouldn't we, like, like, I really, really am going to want to see that this approach that we're doing is going to be as effective and more, or more effective than a, a targeted sort of pullout program where kids may only have to be in it for like a year. You know, they're not like, there's even, I'll just read a sentence from this. Students who qualified for an inter, for a literacy first intervention but did not receive one typically fell further and further behind grade level expectations, leaving them at a disadvantage when they entered first grade. But the kids who did literacy first ended up very close to being on grade level. So I, you know, I just want to make sure that, like, I, I agree. I'm not just, you know, like, yes, okay, we gotta do what we gotta do. At the same time, like, is that the most effective use of our very limited funds? And are there things that we could be doing that just get the kids who need? I mean, it's the equity mindset. It's like giving kids who need the most, are they getting what they need?
So my first comment on that is um, yes, our, our resources are very, very limited. Even at the time when HMH was identified in spring of twenty twenty-three, it wasn't the least expensive solution. Uh, you know, we went through a process, we brought, you know, principals, we brought teachers, we brought folks within the curriculum department in to do an assessment. And the whole approach that we took at that time was we couldn't, we couldn't wait to provide that additional. We couldn't keep those resources of getting to our campuses because we had to deploy them in the summer of twenty twenty-three. We had meetings with principals and one of the things that we heard was, we don't have the manipulatives. We don't have the resources on hand to actually do the, do the, the things in the campuses. And so we went through that process. And so last year, twenty-three, twenty-four, was the first year that we actually were able to align it with the um instructional coaches. Then, you know, create a system, begin to roll out MTSS, begin to really understand where our students are. And it's at scale. And I think that's one of the challenges that we have is we have to provide resources across, make it to where, you know, a student leaves one campus and goes to another, which happens all the time, especially at our schools that have been historically underserved, that they are coming into an environment where they can then pick up. And what we've, we know is that that is not the case now. That is not the case, period. And so, yes, we have to be very precise in how, in how we deploy our resources. This is the approach that we're taking at the moment. We're always trying to refine and improve. But for us, really understanding which students need additional interventions is going to be key. I think MTSS as a whole and that lift is going to help significantly. And then we can make decisions like that as we move forward.
Appreciate that. Yeah, the MTSS piece is the part of it that I find most compelling. Um, you know, because it is going to help operationalize that equity um part of this. And I just, you know, what I'm hearing, you know, that we're doing, it sounds more like equality and less like equity. You know, it sounds like we're trying to just do the same thing everywhere. And, and I would, I just want to have some assurance that when we come around to adopting a budget, that we're not spending money to teach kids who already know how to read phonics. And the kids that are coming to school not knowing how to read are getting every single resource that we can throw at them throughout. And, and like, that's, that's what we gotta do. And I just, I'm not sure. Like, I know we're just starting on this, but I'm not yet assured that that's happening with what I'm seeing here. I'm sure you guys have plans for that, but it's not in this presentation. And so as we kind of move on, I'm really going to continue going back and saying, okay, well, is this as good as a pullout program? That has, that's based on the science reading, based on the whole thing, but it's about people. It's about that connection with that one-on-one, um, you know, loving, trained person. That is probably not ever going to happen in a classroom with one teacher and twenty-two students. I don't know how you replicate that, like, through a curriculum.
It, it can't be replicated by just, through just a curriculum. I think that's what we're saying. I, I think it, it really requires our educators, it requires, I mean, the entire system. I mean, as Laquisha said, there are seventy-eight elementary schools. Um, and, and to provide that level of support, we have to be really, really intentional and deploy our resources as, as best we can. I think one of the things that we heard over and over again was that we didn't have the ability to support all of our campuses, really consistently to begin with. But I agree with you and it's something we've talked about, which is why we have the bans, which is why we're hired the way we hire, the way that we are deploying resources now is wherever our students are that have been historically underserved, that need more support, we're going to allocate those resources. Their instructional coach and our content interventionist that we're bringing on board, those are going to be centralized, really for the main function of deploying them at the campuses that need the most support. And so I, I think overall, absolutely what we're doing is equity-based. I think that, you know, we need to be, you know, really clear as to how we spend our dollars moving forward. And if there's something that we can leverage from a partner, then we're going to do it. We want to provide autonomy as best we can in the parameters of TEA, uh, and we're always looking to improve. And so as we move forward with our academic vision, if there are things that we need to explore together, we need to explore them together.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, Vice President Foster, any questions or comments?
No, it's a, this is a rich and important conversation. Um, then I'm listening. Uh, no questions right now.
Trustee Hunter.
Thank you. Um, where to begin? On slide five of the presentation, we get the the root cause analysis. And I'm, I guess, as trustee Whitley Chu has stated today, we have a lot of buzzwords that we're using. I just keep thinking about the Princess Bride. It's like, I don't, that does not mean what you think it means. And I'm seeing the root cause analysis, but it does not help me understand what we are going to do. I see some strategies and that's great. But when I look at the chart on slide four, we have seventy-two thousand students, correct? Uh, thereabouts.
Yes.
Six percent of them are African-American. That's less than forty-five hundred kids. No way should that number be the number that it is. No way. We literally, if we talk about budget, we have the budget to like hire a personal tutor for each one of these kids. We wouldn't even put a dent in. So I'm super confused when a lot of these kids are starting pre-K three, pre-K four, and already in the second grade, they need interventions? Something is wrong, right? Something is wrong. When I'm looking at the root cause analysis, the question that I chose from our purple sheet is how do adult behaviors need to change in response to the student data? Like, that's for the administration to answer. What I do know is that it's not changing. It hasn't changed since I've been sitting here. It hasn't changed since I was sitting out there. I understand that people are working and that they are doing what they need, but what we are doing is not enough. That's just it. I love, I want to give kudos to the program because parents should. I teach my teachers, do not tell parents their kids are doing fine. They don't want, they, they don't, that's not what they care about. The question they should know is, is my kid on grade level? Can my kid read? And I hope that those are the kinds of questions that are going out in the newsletters. Still don't know why parent teacher conferences are in the middle of the day while people are at work, but I guess we'll work on that at another, at another time. I'm really concerned about what trustee Singh said. If we have this small incremental growth, we're never going to make twenty twenty-nine. And that's not being pessimistic, that's just being realistic. We're not going to make it. We have to do something so radical. Now, I don't know what that is, but we better be looking for it. We better find it. Because people said today and they said tonight, it's impacting. And we have not felt, well, I guess we have felt it because people have voted with their, their feet. They have left. We have not done what we need to do. So when I look at this root cause analysis, tell me what in that root cause analysis tells the administration what to do? Cause I don't see it. I just see the same old, not the same old strategies, but similar strategies that haven't changed it from year to year, from beginning of the year to middle of the year, from middle of the year to end of the year. So that's just open to anybody who wants to answer.
Laquisha, you want to start or no?
Yeah, I'll start. So um, so we a hundred percent agree um with what you're saying. And you are right in the fact that adult behaviors have to change. It can be challenging to get adults to change from doing things that they've always done. And so some of the strategies you mentioned are the same. But as I said in the presentation, we haven't had consistent implementation of some of the strategies that we know will work. And so that's really the basis of the presentation is that you have to have solid tier one instruction. If students have solid instruction the first time around, the majority of the students will get it. But when I wa, and I just have to be transparent, when I walk in and out of classrooms, I'm not seeing students engaged on a regular inconsistent basis. And, and I, and I'm not discounting our teachers that work super, super hard, right? But we have to be intentional about working hard on things that impact student growth. And so really where I think that it looks like we are like trying to remove autonomy, we're not. Like, we're trying to give them a set of plans so that when you come together, you can really talk about the how it's delivered and how you're going to engage students and how you're going to make phonics not boring for students. But it's hard for teachers to find time to look for the material they're going to use, then to come together and talk about it in the ninety minutes we give them for a PLC. We have to do the things that we know work. And again, it isn't just research that we pull up and come in here and say, research. This is, these are strategies that I know when I call principals and say, hey, how did you get an A? When every others, when many other schools across the state got enough with your same demographic. And they tell me I do this. And they tell me repeatedly, when I take what I know about leading a campus of marginalized families, I don't see it day in and day out every time I walk onto a campus. And again, I, I can't say enough, it does not reflect how hard our people are working. They are working super hard. Um, but I don't know that we're working hard on the things. I know, because our data says that we're not working hard on the things that move student learning.
And kudos, yes, I know how hard they are working, but we need to work smarter, not harder, right? Cause we, we not going to drive the nail with a screwdriver. We need a hammer. And right now, we don't have a hammer. And we need to find, I don't know what that is or how we get there, but we have to find it and we have to find it fast. Because there, there are repercussions when these students are not successful beyond that they can't read. That the, we are increasing the prison, the school to prison pipeline, because we know that when it comes to reading. So that's the deal. The repercussions are, the Fed says, you're not closing the gap. The state says, you're not closing the gap. And we're, it's a double whammy. So it is in our best interest to throw everything, including dollars, at these kids. And I don't see that, because if I see that, something would be different, right? And when we just talked earlier, if I got a new teacher, an uncertified teacher, I got a teacher that's barely hanging on because her mental health, because who would put a five, you know, kindergarten, thirty kindergarten in a room with somebody? I couldn't make it. And I consider myself to be pretty tough. So that's what I'm saying. If, that's what we have to put our money where our mouth is and say, hey, school X, you only have fifteen kindergartners. Whoa, that's money. That means we gotta have more classes. Whoa, middle school X, right? You don't have a class over twenty. Whoa, that's more money, right? And so as we are looking at the deficit and we're looking at the budget, this is where the rubber meets the road. Because if we are trying to pinch pennies, then we're going to get the same old, same old every single time. I know you're working hard, but we gotta work smarter. That's just it. We gotta work smarter. And whatever we can do, that's a policy, that's a budget. If I got, and I have done it before, Ally ain't in, she's in here, I will go get on the phone and call people. I don't have any problem with that. But I gotta go knock on some doors. I can go knock on some doors. I can sit with some parents. I am willing to do that if that's what it takes, whatever we have to do. You can count on me. I know that's what the board needs. You know, they, they, they want to help too. David can knock on some doors in his suit. But no, we can do that. We can do that, y'all. Whatever y'all need, but you gotta tell us. We got, the administration has got to let us know so that we can do it, do it fast and do it quickly. Thank you.
Well, I mean, I think, I mean, I think Laquisha said it beautifully. It, I think it, we're, we're at this point where we're trying desperately to provide the resources to all of our campuses, but specifically what they need. And at the same time, we know that we can't support them if there's an infinite number of different curriculum that we're sup. And so we, we, we're trying to find this balance. And at the same time, be able to create a system that ensures it's being done with fidelity across whatever they, they select. It's being done well. And at the same time, also track where our students are on grade level, if they need interventions. You know, making sure we, we provide the support to go back to, to one if they're two, um, all of these things. And I, I just think that, you know, this is, this is still early. I am, I guess grateful that the numbers are beginning to move, but I agree with you that rubber is meeting the road pretty quickly. We're trying to find ninety million dollars in cuts. You know, we didn't go with the least expensive option in curriculum. We've never go with the least expensive option. We never have. You know, because that's, doesn't align with our values. But at the same time, you know, But at the same time, you know, what could more dollars mean elsewhere in the system? And so I just think we're getting to a point where these values that we have are really gonna determine, you know, what challenging decisions we have to make moving forward. It's just difficult. But I do think the team has done an amazing job, given what we've been going through over the last eighteen months, honestly. I mean, MTSS to me alone will move, will definitely show significant improvement in outcomes.
Trustee Kaufman?
Mine is just, I, I would love to see the, the data behind the root cause analysis, the baseline data that, that indicates that classroom observations and surveys showed an inconsistent use of materials and the observation and surveys that showed the inconsistent implementation of practices, et cetera, just so that we have a better understanding of what the root cause is. And then in subsequent reports can see that those pieces identified as the cause are showing improvement because the results won't be instantaneous, but we can see the precursor to the results, which would be that the underlying conditions are improving. So I would just love if that data is available for, to share with us. And then would be followed up on in the next reporting so we can see that the change, that would be great.
Trustee Gonzalez?
I think that's a great suggestion. I had that same thought earlier, which was if there's walkthrough data that's collected that then would correlate with decreases in the number of students that are identified as requiring or recommended for intervention, then I would expect those two things to, you know, overlap. But I don't know if that exists, but I had the same wondering that trustee Kaufman did. I did want to, well, just say one thing and then I, I did have one question. I, you know, I, I hear the, the, the dissonance and the tension that's being brought up by, you know, some of the other trustees. And I'm thinking about my own experience as a teacher in the district. And I student taught at one school. And it was like, PLC, what's a PLC? Like, we never had PLC. We just never, we didn't go to the meetings. And I was there all day, I did my full student teaching there. And then I got hired at a campus and it was like, this is what a PLC is, you know? It was very structured, very different. And I think that I would have appreciated having support as an early career teacher. But I also understand and I hear the sense of being de-professionalized by being mandated to be handed something. And I also, it's a tension that pre-exists, like that, I was student teaching like a decade ago in this district. And so I understand it's not a new problem, but anyway, I just wanted to offer that. The question that I had is related to slide four. I didn't hear it mentioned, and so if it was, then please forgive me. But the, you were talking about declines amongst all the student groups, pretty precipitous declines in students that are recommended for intervention in certain groups. And there's just, you know, one specific one at the very top that swung in the opposite direction, and that was American Indian students. And so I, I wanted to know if there was something additional insight that you could offer as to why the same progress didn't occur with that specific group?
I don't have the N on that group. I know that it is small. So, but, but I did request from our data department just to have the N for future presentations because it is good information to have. And so you see wide variations in the performance of that group. And typically that, that will happen just semester to semester, year to year with smaller student numbers.
Thank you for that. I, I think I brought that up at the last session that I think that would be really helpful because I had the same wondering when I was looking at these other categories of students was, how much did the size of that group change when we're comparing these different semesters, different years? But I forgot that that could totally be an explanation. So that was it. All my other questions, I think, were covered already. Thank you. Yes, I am requesting that, yeah, in the future, that be included, I think on everything would be helpful, yeah.
We're, we're gonna be meeting to think through some of these monitoring reports in the very near future. And so I, that is one of the things that we'll make as a standard movement board. And then on the MTSS question, that'll be part of the next presentation, but absolutely as part of the observations. We'll have, we'll report that out to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. I remembered from our LSG training that every trustee either has to say, ask a question or say that their question has already been addressed by someone. So if you have, I can't remember who has not had a chance yet to say something, but I'm just gonna go down the line. Trustee Lugo?
My question has already been asked, thank you.
Trustee Sephatah?
I have a comment and I'm sorry, I can't. My reader doesn't read graphs and all those kinds of things that y'all talk about. But in listening, I'm, I'm just curious if, you know, the school can't do it all alone. It takes a community, it takes the parents, it takes everyone to get on board, to support what you are doing during the school day. So is there a strategy, is there in, in there somewhere that you are work, the PSSs are doing a workshop on, on literacy? The first semester, let's talk about literacy. What are some ways we can help our kids read? I mean, that's what I did back in PTA and PTAs did it. So PTAs all be sharing the challenges the schools are having because it's gonna take all of us to address this. You can have the best curriculum, but if it's not enhanced in the extended day at home, the weekends, then, you know, it, it can't be all on us, right? But it's a community effort. And I think once parents know, just like with the Title One, when parents learned about attendance and, oh, that it was costing us money, they had no clue, you know? So there is a lot of learning and teaching for parents on how we can support what you are doing during the school day. So the teachers will know that they are, they are not alone. Thank you.
Yes, excellent point. And so we have requested time now that we, Ms. Rinks mentioned the newsletter going home, but really the work, it took us a little bit longer to get it out because the work behind that was actually to scope out the entire year and look at what students would be learning at that time, what would be relevant information for parents. And she mentioned as well that, that is something that campuses can use in their PTA meetings, in their coffee with the principal meetings to reference it and really, you know, in person, you know, talk about what the content is of that newsletter. And now that we have it, we've requested time with the PSSs so they can do exactly the same thing. Is really work closely with those families that they have already built great relationships with and that they see on a regular basis to do the exact same thing. Because that in-person touch is just so much, is just so much nicer than, than the newsletter. It's, it's why we've, you know, wanted to make it a part of parent conferences as well.
Thank you. And vice president Foster?
I thought I was gonna get to that. Because this was, I, I've, I've just learned a lot and I love, trustee Gonzalez referred to it as attention. And I, I hear and feel the, the tension. And I can even see it on, on faces where the struggle between what supporting not just a wide range of students, but a wide range of teachers looks like. And all like the metaphors that come to mind are kind of like not particularly pleasant. Like if I talk about McDonald's or something like that, like that's not the best food, right? And it was like, well, everybody's gonna eat a burger and we can say they got meat of some sort, you know? And so somebody's read The Hobbit, somebody, like, all, all of this, I like, all of this is, is resonant with me and, and what a central office must experience, what not, but must, does experience in terms of the complexity of serving the diversity of our teachers is, is real. And what trustee Whitley Chu brought up very poignantly is absolutely real as well. And we all know of the spaces where a teacher has kind of bought the space to kind of shut the door and we leave him alone. And they do it and they get it. Like, all of these mythic things that go on, go, go on. So I experience this, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm with us all suffering through this poignant tension and struggle. And I would weigh in, I don't, you know, I don't, I'm not in y'all's shoes, so don't have, and don't have all the answers and understand that we have very high expectations for the both and, that all teachers are brought, are, are supported towards excellence. And at the same time, that we do not kill the soul of teaching, you know, in, in the process. And I, I, I appreciate the clear articulation of this tension, that it needs to, we need to feel this tension. And we need to like live in this tension. We need all of our teachers to be getting better and better. We need all of our teachers not just supported, but experiencing the feeling of support. And sometimes the pain of growth. And we need teachers who are, who are, are there, supported on the campus to support other teachers, by the way, I think is a teeny tiny piece of the puzzle. Like when you're talking about classroom observations and what does support look like within the building? Which goes to another one of our big things, which is the distribution of teacher excellence. So that, you know, what we have in the building is not always a need for the scare, the scariness of the, the big administrator from downtown coming. But, and even if the, the administrator from downtown is coming with love, that, that, that doesn't translate to what it feels like. But that person who has been right there with me, that I talked to and is guiding me and mentoring me and supporting me, being supported and actually doing that in a structured way, I guess when a PLC works really well and when, you know, things are going well on a campus. I'm just sort of talking through this out loud, so I, I apologize for that. But one thing that does, I do want to ask about is, is sort of a question of demographics. You know, one of the things that trustee Hunter will point out very poignantly is how we are serving, for instance, black children and how it ain't happening the way it needs to happen. Our years of neglect of black learners, African-American learners, African-descended learners has left to, has resulted in, among other things, their departure. And some of that has to do with the affordability of Austin. But some of that, a lot of that has to do with perceptions of what happens in one of our schools versus what will happen if they go to this district or this district or this district. So with the evacuation of a black middle class, you now have a higher percentage, of course, of kids with higher needs. Kids who are experiencing housing instability, kids who are, you know, dealing with a whole bunch of life pressures that are coming from family pressures that are just coming from how we've chosen to structure our society. I'm curious if that is a, a piece of the puzzle in terms of our African-American student outcomes. In other words, the changing demographic of the student population being a factor in what look like declining scores or even stable scores. Do we have any sort of sense of demographics and have we articulated demographics with outcomes? Class articulated, the intersectionality of race and class? Do you understand my question? Yeah, okay.
I think that's a yes, a no. Because as a district, our data shows that you can be black middle class and still not do well, right? So it isn't necessarily
Thank you for that.
about demographics, right? And, and I think that that is, that's just something that we have to own. And I also believe, personally, it's my personal belief, that no matter what a student comes to you with, there are still opportunities, right? And so I don't like walk into a space and I realize that there are root causes and there are other factors. That just means you have to do something differently, right? To reach the family, to reach the student. And that's really, I think, what this group is really working at. And I can tell you, it's taken some real soul searching for me because it, it comes automatic, right? Like, I, I work with different demographics, it's been successful. And you just kind of wonder like, what is the key? And I think that's what we are striving to find is like, what is that one piece that's missing within our schools? That our black students, regardless of their economic status, are not performing to the level of their peers. So that, hopefully that, you know, was addressed your question.
Well, I, no, I really appreciate you pointing out that many black middle-class kids weren't doing well or aren't doing as well, and that's why they're gone, right? Because they're going, you know, and, and anecdotal experience. But I bet the data bears it out that, you know, I, I know many families that say, this is what was happening last year in one of our schools. And it's heartbreaking to like be a part of these conversations. This is what was happening in this school, Dr. Foster, that was under your, you know, under AIST. And this is what's happening now. I want to point out to you how different my experience is now. So we, we do have that. So thank you for kind of like owning that, that's part of our reality. And that goes to some other root causes in terms of all of our teachers being equipped to serve all kids well. So there's lots of growth areas in that. I'm, I'm, I'm still not, so that, so that's, so there's a yes and, and an agreement on a point of not serving kids well across the board in certain instances, or not serving demographics across the board, regardless of class. But I still, I guess I'm still, and maybe this, this is kind of a data dive, but I, I still am wondering, and eventually it might have implications for instruction. I still am wondering about basically concentrations of need and whether we're accounting for concentrations of need. Because again, race ends up articulating with class. So now what looks like a racial piece, and it still has a racial dimension to it, has a very powerful class dimension to it. You take this racial group and a larger percentage of them have this specific set of identifiable needs that in some respects, we should figure out how to serve. But as part of an understanding that we can't do, we can't fix everything in society. So we have to figure out how are we going to be excellent, given what we know about the stresses our kids and their families face? Maybe you can comment to this, or maybe this is a little too philosophical.
No, I mean, they're definitely concentrations, concentrations of students and their needs. And that's partially due to the design of Austin, right? Like, how we reside. I just go back to saying some things, sometimes, not sometimes, you have to do things in a different way based on the needs of the school and the demographic of the school. And, and that does come with some financial implications. And as the superintendent said, that's something that we're gonna have to explore, how we can really differentiate support in very meaningful ways based on the students being served at certain campuses. And, and so basically you, you, I think you arrived at the answer that, that I'm giving you. It's like, yes, like, we, we do have to account for things that happen outside of school when the students are inside our buildings. I, I, I say this quite often. We just have to have different expectations for our students, our black students. Like, we just have to call it and we all have to share those high expectations. And I don't always see those high expectations in place. And I know Dr. Maxwell and I can, can come with a lot of intensity because we don't look at numbers. We visit campuses, we spend a lot of time on campuses. And I see students behind the numbers, right? Like, having had a student in this district receiving special service, like, I have lived experiences matching our parent. And so for us, this is very personal, like, very personal. And we have to do better because our kids' lives depend on it. And so again, that is going to mean, I think, shifting our thoughts as an entire organization as to how we're gonna support these campuses, the teachers on these campuses and the leaders of these campuses. Because they do have some atypical situations that they are trying, trying to do their best with.
I, I, I appreciate that and I see what's behind your eyes on that. And I, and Lakeisha, I do, I deeply appreciate that. And, you know, part of the irony is that we had a pretty good conversation with a bunch of my students today about how our kids can achieve and that all of our kids can achieve. And this is something that our kids need to hear and our families need to hear and our, our African-American community. and our, our African-American community needs to hear and all of our community needs to hear and our teachers need to hear about the absolute capacity for excellence that exists and the absolute capacity for black excellence that exists. And that at some point, part of effectiveness with a black child very might well be leaning into the racial identity of that black child in a way that some people don't understand. And the same would be for a new immigrant student. And the same would be for a, a kid with a special ability. Where we don't say, well, what we're going to do is coach to teach in a way that blends all that and flattens all that. But rather teach with the heart and the courage and belief in kids. That what you say is you name that thing that society has labeled at deficit. So that part of the production of teaching excellence is the production of a capacity to acknowledge the difference and see it as an asset. And I know I'm kind of preaching to folks who kind of understand a lot of this. But it's something that sort of needs to be shouted from the rooftops as, as far as I'm concerned, in a way that our kids are hearing it. It linguistic diversity, like name the element of diversity. Diversities around abilities, diversity of your language background, diversity in your class background, regional background, like name it. And among them in particular, in, 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 in terms of my research area, blackness. That the root of my effectiveness with kids has often been leaning into that identity that is, that comes from their home, that is beautiful. The society is telling them is not. I don't know the answer to the question of the extent to which our teachers as a broad core are, are, are there yet. But as we talk about standardizing anything, I think that I would standardize an understanding of the excellence of our kids in their complexity. Not just you're excellent because you're 13 and all 13-year-olds are great. But an excellence that says, I see you and your family and your situation. And by the way, that thing that has hurt you, that thing that's been hard, we're going to lean into that and make that the thing that makes you great or helps you be great. I'm not as strong. In fact, I'm probably would cast myself as weak in many of the methodologies that are indeed research-backed. That say, first we follow this and then we do this and then we do that. And somehow, as an educator, I've learned to produce excellence. Because my educating, my work has more to do with the kids and my belief in the kids. So that the, the font of their excellence is not the quality of my methodological expertise in a, in a kind of very scripted way. But rather the font of the excellence that is produced is them. Does, does that make any sense at all?
It, it does. And if I may, in discussing the presentation, really, and really not just the presentation, but the work that we've been doing, we're well aware, there's nothing groundbreaking about using instructional materials that are high-quality materials or some of the things that we've talked about. But the, the difference, and I think the friction that we're feeling in the system right now is that the expectation that is actually happening with our students is, is different now. It's changed. It's, there's a, there's a different level of accountability. And it, it never ceases to break my heart when you start in a classroom using grade-level materials, how many responses you might get on, well, my kids can't do this. And they can, and this is a response, they can and they will. And here is how we teach so that it happens. Because they can do these things. And over time, over years, uh, uh, that begins to build, well, these kids can't, my kids can't. Let me, let me back it up. And what you find, of course, by the time, we were talking about chronic absenteeism earlier, is a student who has no desire to attend school anymore for that very reason. And so it starts as early, I mean, we're talking about second grade, but it starts before that. And that, that's that explicit connection that we're, that we know is there that we're trying to make. You just start with something as simple as you need to use grade-level materials with your students. You need to believe that they can. And here's how we will support you as a teacher, as a campus leader, as an instructional coach, to have the things that you need to make that happen. Because half of that is the material and half of that is that relationship and the belief of having high expectations for every student is believing that they can.
Thank you for all that. And, and I shouldn't lean into my weaknesses and make them public as an instructor. But, um, I do, I do, uh, see y'all and, and appreciate you all, like the, the side of the equation that you're leaning into that also brings out of many of the trustees, myself included, another side of the equation that we then lean into. So I don't want to lean into the assumption that the things I'm saying aren't embedded in your philosophies as well. But I do think this stuff is like perennially worth lifting up and lifting up and lifting up. And it goes to what you're saying about always seeing the humanity of our students first and like leaning really into that. So as tough as this conversation is, I'm deeply appreciative of y'all. And even as I'm appreciative of tension-filled conversations, if they're part of serving our students well. So thank you all. And thank you to my trustees for a really important conversation.
Thank you. Any other trustees? I really appreciate, um, the vulnerability of the staff and really sharing. The best answers are the real answers. And we've been up here long enough, we can tell when they're real. And I felt like you guys really took, um, our, our questions and concerns seriously and maybe had some of the same ones yourselves. And so I think we're going to get through this. Um, it's just going to take more of these, um, perhaps tension-filled conversations. So thank you all. All right. So now we have to vote on whether or not we will accept this monitoring report. And so at this point, I will entertain a motion for the acceptance of this report from Secretary Boswell.
I move to accept the monitoring report.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right. So having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by trustee Zapata to accept the monitoring report. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously by all those on the dais. Thank you. All right. Uh, we will now, thank you all so much. Thank you.
You're, you're staying.
Oh, gosh, poor Dr. Maxwell. We're sorry. We will now move to our information reports and updates. We have scheduled 45 minutes for tonight's report. And the item does count for our student outcome, outcomes time as it is focused on requirements under our TEA-approved order. So Mr. Segura, would you please introduce the next item?
Absolutely. I'd love the opportunity. So thank you. Uh, the team and I will be giving the update on the TA-agreed order. Uh, this will be a focus on the MTSS update. We just heard a little bit about that on the last two presentations. Joining me tonight are Dr. Jacob Reach, Chief of Governmental Relations and Board Services, Dr. Mary Ann Maxwell, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Academics, Dr. Susan Diaz, Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Academics, and Crystal Kohlhoff, Director of MTSS. And so with that, I'll hand it over to Jacob to kick us off.
Thank you, Board of Trustees and Superintendent Segura. So tonight, we are here providing our monthly TEA-agreed order update. As part of that agreed order, one of the requirements was, uh, for the administration to provide to our Board of Trustees an update on our MTSS system. And so that is what we're going to be providing tonight. I had not prepared the normal slides that I gave because not much have changed, but I did want to highlight two important things. That is, one, that the Board of Trustees will be doing an LSG quarterly evaluation vote at their next regular voting meeting. And that will go out to our trustees tomorrow, the document that you complete. And two, just providing confirmation, uh, that our regularly monthly data reports are still ongoing. And we will continue to provide updates to our Board of Trustees on our regular monthly data reports. Uh, so tonight, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Maxwell, Dr. Diaz, and, uh, Crystal Kohlhoff to provide our MTSS update.
Thank you. We'll start just with a general overview of the, uh, MTSS system as a whole. Just to talk about how it works and then we'll get into some of the pieces of, of the implementation that we're seeing so far and, and what's coming up next. And so our first slide, uh, just as a definition, a simple definition of MTSS is just a system-level initiative that helps districts improve student outcomes. And so right there, just focusing on that system-level initiative. So as a, as a whole system, this is really something that we need to be focusing on as, um, part of what we're doing to improve student outcomes. And so that starts with, um, our screeners, which we've talked about tonight. Uh, as the, as an initial piece and that initial indicator of whether or not students might need to receive interventions, um, to improve those outcomes. And then also, that's just the kickoff. We use multiple sources of data. And so what this looks like is at a campus level, students are screened. And then, uh, you can have a district-wide or a PLC, uh, meeting or, uh, an individual, uh, called a child study team meeting. So that's a CST. And that CST gathers and looks at student data, talks about students and talks about the different factors that may be, um, affecting any student outcomes. And so, uh, that could be, uh, something academic, that could be something behavioral, that could be attendance for a student. And that's the thing that we need to focus on first before we, uh, do any academic interventions. And so it's just a multiple, multiple sources of data to really make solid decisions for students at, at the beginning. And then through that, then we decide that continuum of so most students will stay in tier one, um, ideally. And, um, bless you. Most students will stay in tier one. And then some students will be identified through that CST process to receive tier-two interventions. And that just means, uh, there are multiple data sources that indicate that you need more targeted support. And so, um, we're, uh, have worked through our systems this year to really, uh, make an investment in those resources that would provide that support. And also, um, I, I ideally would be able to add and, and are looking at content interventionists for campuses, especially that have the most number of students that would qualify for these interventions. Um, and then if you've been receiving tier-two interventions, uh, with fidelity, then, and they haven't been working and we're looking at that, that data, then we might make a decision to put you, uh, to put a student in a tier-three intervention, which is more intensive. It's usually more narrowed in focus and, and really targets the largest gaps that a student may have in learning. Uh, the whole idea is really to get that student back into grade level as much as possible, tier-one as much as possible, um, in, in the core classroom, um, at all the time possible. And so we also do that through a system of progress monitoring. So any students that are in, um, really any of our tiers are progress monitored in various ways. But especially once you start receiving interventions, it's really important to progress monitor how those interventions are working. President Singh actually brought up Literacy First earlier. Um, and that is one of the groups that we work with to provide interventions. That's one of the reasons, you know, content interventionists are so important is to be able to provide that same level of very small group or even individual support for students that need those targeted interventions. Because we know from the research and, and Literacy First data will show you the same. Any student that is receiving a high-quality intervention will make significant gains compared to a student that is not getting that intervention, that should have or could have received that intervention. Uh, so the progress monitoring of those interventions is what tells us whether or not it's working. And then that all leads us back into the process of database decision-making. Huge piece of MTSS. Uh, we have to be continually looking at, um, the initial and then the progress monitoring data of our students to make those decisions. And again, those are made on campuses, they're made by that CST that have knowledge of all the pieces of a student. So they're making a more holistic decision.
On the next slide, we're going to really also look at MTSS overview is it's also a system. We're looking at systemic changes and implementation at a campus level. So it goes beyond just providing intervention to a student. But what are we doing on a campus for a system? It's not just saying, these students are at risk, we need to provide intervention. What are we doing at tier-one? What are all those systems we just talked about in the previous presentation that we have in place to support all students? And so we're really looking at implementation, especially this year. And that comprehensive way to do that for the district and for schools is to identify systemic obstacles. And how do we start to address those in a preventive, quick way to make sure that we're hitting those pieces? And this practice that we're going to be looking at for this year is implemented through a district-level child study team meeting. So as a district, how do we look at our campuses and larger numbers to identify areas of support that we can deploy to campuses that are showing us needs? Um, and that will be through an MTSS data tracker that we will be, um, deploying this year. So this is an example of the MTSS tiers. Now, I just want to kind of say that this is an ideal situation with a stabilized system where all the pieces are in place. So I don't want you to look at those numbers on the side and be concerned about those. That's really what we're striving for is that our tier-one universal system has all of these bullets in place, that we have some evidence-based practices that all students get. That's what that means by universal. That we're screening all of our students, we try to catch them early. We're not using a wait-to-fail model. And we're progressing, monitoring our at-risk students. And at-risk really means that these students don't necessarily mean intervention, but they have things going on that I need to keep an eye on. And we're monitoring those as a school system. And we're making these database decisions with multiple data points and using high-quality instructional materials. And the reason we need these database decisions is MTSS is complex. It's not just, I have a score, so I automatically need X, Y, Z. You need to dig into those students to determine, did they receive really high-quality tier-one that first teach? Or did they have a sub last year, half of the time? That may be something I need to look at. Was attendance an issue? Or during math, were they sitting in the office every math class? I can't say that that's a math issue. That's a, a behavior instructional piece that I need to put in place. So that's what we really mean by these multiple pieces of data. It doesn't mean multiple math scores. It means looking at the whole child holistically. So we can really make sure we're picking the right intervention. We'd, what we have seen in the past was we've had students that struggled and are most underserved students. We threw a lot of stuff at them, but it wasn't targeted, it wasn't based on any data, and they missed a lot of instruction. Because if we're being pulled for lots of things, we want to look at data to figure out what is going to be the most effective in instruction we give that's going to be timely, quick, so we can move them through the tiers effectively. So then, when we have all those pieces in place at universal, then hopefully only about 15 to 20% of our students require targeted intervention. And with that, we're looking at interventions that are evidence-based. I'm, I'm making sure that there is reason, there's systems behind it, there's structure to those lessons. And I have progress monitoring to see when they're doing well. Because we don't want students to be in tier-two for just, you know, we, nine months. We want to be progress monitoring to make sure that as soon as they can successfully access grade-level curriculum, we're moving them back into tier-one. And then once again, at tier-two, we're making these database progress monitoring decisions in a child study team meeting. But if we see a student that is still kind of struggling after we provided these interventions, then in a well-functioning system, about 5 to 10% of our students will require tier-three. That becomes much more intensive, much more individualized. And at this point, I'm using diagnostic tools to even drill down even further. Not are they struggling in reading, but what exact skills are they struggling in? And then we progress monitor and do some database decision-making in that area as well. And so this is another example of kind of the placement across the tiers. These arrows are a little misleading. It's not, um, everyone goes through these tiers and they just go straight to tier-three. It is systematic. We don't skip tiers. However, it also loops back. Our goal is to always push students back down to the least amount of support they need to be successful. But at tier-one, we really want to make sure that they've got that high-quality instruction and we're using materials, um, that meet the needs of the students in academics and behavior. So we need both of those pieces for our students. And then if they need extra support, we're going to move them into tier-two where we have consistent interventions, we're using those interventions with fidelity. Most interventions are made with certain criteria of how we implement them. So we want to ensure that that's occurring. And then that increased level of support requires setting goals and then progress monitoring those goals that we have determined. And if a student is still struggling, we're going to move them up to tier-three. And if we see that those things are working and we're doing much better, then we can start moving them back down into the tiers. So this is a very, not so much a linear process, but very circular and requires a lot of data and meeting and problem-solving.
So many of y'all remember, um, we've talked to you about the manual. It was a big part of the, um, the TEA order. So just as a reme- So just as a reminder, we, much of the content in the manual comes from the tier modules that the teachers and the staff went through last year. And all new teachers are also receiving the tier modules this year as part of the order. The content has been approved by TEA on June, June 28th. They approved the manual. And it has been disseminate, disseminated to all district and campus leadership teams and teachers. And we submitted proof to TEA that this has, that these things have occurred on October 1st, 2024. So if you recall, we have, we have talked to you all about the trainer of trainers that was held at Leadership Institute. So that was all the campus principals and the assistant principals and other campus leaders. So they came, they came during the Leadership Institute, they received a trainer of trainer model where they, it was all around the MTSS process and particularly the manual. And then they then in turn took the training back to their campuses and delivered it to their teachers on August the 12th. We also made sure that the instructional coaches were trained on the manual and the MTSS process, and that occurred in July. So another part of the order is the, the walkthroughs. And so all core teachers, interventionist and inclusion teachers who spend at least 50% of their time in core classrooms will receive one walkthrough in the fall of 2024. Teachers that are identified from that initial walkthrough will receive extra coaching and support and two more walkthroughs in the spring of 2025. And it is important to note that this is embedded within the PPFT process. So this is not something else that is going to have to happen to the teachers or the principals or the campuses. So Mary Ann and Crystal and her teams have worked together with Talent Strategy to ensure that this is a, it's a natural part of the PF, PF, P, PFP. PPFT process, sorry, I'm tired. And so therefore, it does count as one of their walkthroughs. So again, it's not extra work, it's a built-in part of the PPFT framework. Oh my gosh, Brandy, don't kill me. Okay, evaluation. Okay, so anyway, we worked very hard so that way it wouldn't be something extra, but a natural part of just the evaluation process. And the, the last part about the walkthroughs is that we created forums in conjunction with TEA. So we, whenever we create something, we go back and forth with TEA with our monitors and we, you know, negotiate and, and get feedback on all of the, the things that we were making in particular for the MTSS handbook. And part of that was the walkthrough forums that we created for K-12 classrooms. And in those K-12 walkthrough forums, they do address all tiers of instruction, tiers one, two, and three. We also have specific rubrics that are for numeracy and literacy. So they have a, a specific rubric that really drills down into essential components of literacy and numeracy instruction in each tier. But we also do have a generalist walkthrough form for our social studies and science teachers. And they, again, they do include practices that are effective practices for intervention. So again, that's delineated in the walkthrough form by having the three tiers in there.
So part of what we're doing here too, as in the agreed order, is calibrating. So we started off, before we began all of the walkthroughs for MTSS with calibration sessions. That was a whole group session with principals and then additional sessions with assistant principals that we conducted in September. And that was just to get everyone really to see our, that they had already gone through training for the walkthrough forums in Leadership Institute over the summer. But this is really the first time to view a video, talk about what they saw, use the forums to give each other feedback. What would you have said? How would you have coached this teacher? And really included these common observation coaching protocols as well in this calibration session. So it was a little bit of, what did you see? What did you notice? How, how would you have given this teacher feedback? And then specific tools to coach a teacher to provide feedback and really to identify the next best action step, which is really part of a coaching cycle rather than just a walkthrough and then you're done. What we're really trying to do, and, and we talked about this in the earlier presentation with literacy, is develop a culture of feedback and coaching as the highest level of professional development possible for, for anyone. So we included that in the calibrations. And then right now, as part of those calibrations, executive directors of school leadership, last week, the last couple of weeks, have been going out to campuses, to all campuses, and then conducting calibration visits, so that they're actually doing the same process at their campuses, in their classrooms, with their teachers, and then talking afterwards about coaching opportunities, about working with teachers, about giving teachers feedback and all of that. So while it's been part of our order, we've also tried to make it a very meaningful part of what we do just as a system and, and how we, how we believe in a culture of coaching. And so the other thing that we are doing as well is, just as every teacher gets a classroom walkthrough, every core teacher, interventionist and inclusion teacher that spends 50% or more of their time gets a walkthrough, in the core classroom gets a walkthrough, all campus leaders also get a, what the order refers to as walkthrough, what we're referring to them here as, is implementation visits. Because really what this visit is about is the executive directors or anyone from our teams will go out, sit with campus leaders and talk about what the implementation of MTSS looks like at that campus. So that's not just what it looks like at one classroom, but that rubric, we've provided a rubric for this that was provided to all of us, all, actually all of ASD has seen this and has been trained on this rubric as part of our tier modules last year. And we're actually implementing it this time. So we're, it includes things like, are you using multiple sources of data for your database decision-making processes? What does your progress monitoring and your reporting look like at your campuses? How many are qualifying for tier two and tier three interventions? And there's really checking the overall system. What, what infrastructure do you have in place for professional learning as you see trends and walkthroughs? And so all of that is part of this larger rubric. So all campus leaders receive one of those implementation visits, at least one during the fall. And then executive directors and our teams look at how campuses are doing and then decide, okay, which campuses will receive additional coaching and additional walkthroughs in the, in the perform system, which is our system that we use for walkthroughs. And then lastly, upcoming fall requirements. We've talked about a few submissions and evidence that we've already submitted. Our next submission is due October 31st. This is our first data submission. And so what's requested here is universal screening reports in reading and math. We'll be submitting reports that show that all of our students were screened in reading and in math at the elementary levels. We're also using our ECST software system to show which students were identified then at the campuses for tier two and tier three intervention. Because those two things will not be the same numbers. Yes, we've screened all students, but of course, even, even according to the screener, the screener might say, well, the student might be recommended for an intervention, but a CST has decided with more knowledge of the student that that student isn't. And so there's going to be variation in those numbers. And so we're submitting that report from ECST, which is also going to include the intervention entry criteria for students that are entering those interventions and also exit criteria for students that will be leaving. That will be more compared to the report. We'll, we'll submit this exact same report in the spring. And what we'll do, and generally the, the practice there is to look at these larger reports and decide overall, evaluate overall as a system, whether or not you are appropriately serving your students in tier two and tier three. As Ms. Cole have mentioned earlier, the, the ideal numbers were shown to you in that triangle, but we're not there yet. And so what we're doing and monitoring as a system overall is over time, are we getting to those numbers? Where less and less students are recommended for interventions because the tier one academic and behavioral supports that we're providing are such high quality. And then the next submission after that is due on December 31st. So all of that, we, we've talked about tonight with the trainer of trainers, the manual, the walkthroughs, the calibrations, the implementation, all of those involved, the trainings and trainings that we've rolled out this semester. And so we'll submit training logs to TEA for all of those. We're just keeping record of those as we have those trainings and we'll submit the record of that, the evidence of that to TEA before we leave for this semester.
Thank you, Dr. Maxwell.
Thank you. That's the end.
Trustees, are there any questions? And if it's your pleasure, I can just go down the line again. Trustee Lugo?
No questions at this time.
Starting on your end, trustee Gonzalez? Trustee Kaufman? Trustee Hunter?
Thank you for the presentation. I do have a question about ECST. So who is, so theoretically, everybody should be using ECST, right? For the child time to be documenting. Do you have a percentage on who's actually, like, where your numbers are right now?
In the past or current numbers?
Current numbers. Because that would be, it should be higher now.
Yeah.
Historically, every campus has entered in interventions, progress monitoring, AIP plans, service tracking. There's actually a lot of documentation that occurs in ECST that goes beyond just interventions. ECST is a comprehensive student management system that documents all the services we provide. Yeah, and so 100% of our campuses use it. What we're looking for in terms of MTSS is fidelity of implementing that documentation. And what that required of us was actually to redesign some elements of ECST that did not allow us to analyze that information. So for example, we didn't have dropdowns that identified tier two or tier three interventions. It was just an intervention plan. So what we've done this year is redesign those pages to make sure we could capture the data to ensure implementation of our system and we could monitor that. Right now, those, those pages were released last week. And so we're transferring some of that data. So we will have that data on October 31st when we submit it and we'll have numbers. But I have looked at the system just the last few days and we have lots of interventions, lots of roster-based programs and meetings in there already at this time. But we will have better numbers in October, at the end of October.
So, excuse me, I need some clarification. So you're saying all campuses are inputting information. But my question is, shouldn't all teachers be, because I would, just like, simple man. Every teacher should have at least one kid. They're like, hmm. Probably need to get somebody to look at this a second time. So that's what I'm asking is, this is a great system, teachers are busy, and it's like, do I really have time to enter information about little Johnny? It wasn't that bad and move on, right? That's, that's what's going to happen, I know. So how do we ensure that every kid is being documented so we can get them what they need?
And I think that is something that requires the implementation system piece, because that is also part of the implementation rubric that campus principals are using, is that they have consistent child study team meetings where a lot of that documentation occurs. They are reviewing progress monitoring and that should be looked at within ECST. And we are training on the 23rd, principals to ensure that they know how things are entered and also how to pull reports, so they can monitor that implementation on their campus as well. So definitely that is part of the implementation piece, and that is incumbent on the campus to monitor the systems that they have as part of our implementation.
Okay, my final? Oh, go ahead, sir.
Well, I was going to say, it sounds to me as though, because this is beginning built out and we're, we're near having the ability to report on all the campuses, it'll be important to understand where we don't have fidelity implementation recording. Right? I think that's what you're asking. And so at this point, because of where we are, we can't give you that information. But I think after October 31st, if, if we see campuses where there is low reporting or we're not getting what we would expect, then I think we would be able to track that and then also compare it to subsequent months. And then really make informed decisions around how we support that campus better. So right now, we don't have it, but after October 31st and moving forward, we will.
What I'd really, you got me off track there. I had one last question. It wasn't this one, it's another one too. One's a comment, one's a question. What I'd really like to see is that behavior data, that discipline data, and then the child study team, right? Because I would imagine if there's things going on over here, probably showing up over here so that we can figure out how to better serve that kids. So I, I think that's, I don't know if you guys are already doing that, but that sounds like, that's definitely some data I would be asking for. And I will be asking for a disaggregated, so just a. And then my, oh man, did I forget my final question? Dead comment, my test. Such a good point, and I, it's gone. I mean, just, it's gone.
Let us know when you come up with it.
Yeah, dead comment. Thank you.
I believe Secretary Boswell, were you next in making a comment? Or was there?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay.
Yeah, I just have one quick question about, in the manual, you know, we see the academic instruction and interventions. We see the behavioral instruction and interventions. And it looks like that's where SEL now lives. And that we've purchased a curriculum called Character Strong that will either replace or supplement our longtime, kind of our district-developed SEL. And I'm wondering, the, the language I'm seeing suggests that SEL is mainly in support of how students are behaving in the classroom, which seems to be a shift from what we used to do. I'd just like a little understanding of kind of what our goals are here.
Yeah, so we actually need to have an intervention for behavior. And so we provided Character Strong for tier two, tier three, but they also have a comprehensive system that goes from all the tiers. They are, and we needed to find a product that matched and supported all of the systems that we have with an AISD, which includes SEL, restorative practices, our school and safety initiative in terms of anti-bowling. And so we really needed to find something that kind of meshed all that together. It's really not replacing anything that we have. Our SEL department has a really robust set of activities and professional learning around circle time and circle activities that go through every single day. They have these monthly like traits that they use. And what we're doing is making sure that we're working with them to make sure our scopes and sequences align. And then what this provides is a direct instruction piece, because one thing that counselors have mentioned to us and LMHPs in terms of the needs of our mental health that we have, counselors were having to find and pull together resources that was very time-consuming for them. And they now have an intervention that addresses some of the areas that they need. So the counselors have actually latched on incredibly well. They actually presented today to other people that wanted to come into these meetings of how they're implementing that on their campus and the ways that they are being creative and implementing that. So it's, so we're just adding a piece, because what we're really looking for is something that's low burden but high yield for our teachers to implement. And that's what this provides for them. But it's not replacing anything, it's kind of adding to. And what we haven't had in the past was something for tier two intervention for teachers. They don't have to write social skills lessons anymore, they can actually use this piece for that.
Okay, and I thought for a long time, we had a curriculum that was developed with Castle that was in our district, I mean, from 2010 all the way through.
Yeah, we have a, we have quite a few resources and things, and you can access that on their website as well. This extends that, and this is actually a Castle Select program. Their tier two, tier three, and tier one, and also their professional learning is one of the highest level of Castle endorsements that you can receive. So all of it is in alignment and it's just adding to, to make sure our campuses have all the resources they need to meet the needs, needs of our students. Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And so it's, it's not just for behavior, it's really, it's a true SEL program, it's not just.
Yeah, it's SEL, behavior, it's social skills. Tier three has mental health pieces in terms of trauma, resiliency, depression, anxiety. So it, it encompasses all of that.
Okay, that, that label was, made it seem like.
Yes, ma'am.
It was more narrow. Thank you.
Any other trustees have questions or comments? Did you have one? Okay, trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. I just have one technical question, and it came as trustee Boswell was just talking. So if there are secondary campuses that have like combined their advisory and lunchtime into this extended block so that students can do interventions along with lunch, then that would mean that there's not an advisory in like the traditional sense anymore, which is where I would imagine things like tier one behavioral interventions like Character Strong instruction would happen. So if there's no longer. So if there's no longer an advisory class, then where does that tier one behavioral intervention occur?
So some of the guidance given to secondary schools that are using advisory period during this way, and, and one of the, the benefits of the Character Strong curriculum is that it is very malleable. And so it's not a, it doesn't have to be something that you teach, you know, for 10 or 15 minutes every day, and here's your next lesson. But you can actually move the pieces within it so that you may teach it once a week. And so some of the guidance given to secondary schools that are using that time period in that way is you may, depending on the student's needs, spend a couple of days in math and then have some different groups and maybe a couple of days with language arts, and maybe one of your days that week is spent on a Character Strong piece with your advisory period. And so it is still, it is still considered the same level of tier one proactive approach to behavior and could be integrated into the advisory period that way.
So it would be integrated into the advisory period or into the core academic class?
It could be either.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, so we are going to move on now. Thank you all so much. So this ends the section on the information reports from the administration. At this time, we will now move into the preview of the agenda items that will be considered for a vote at the next regular board meeting on October 24th. A I S D staff is available to answer any questions for tonight's preview. And we'll begin tonight with item eight, which is the agenda preview for upcoming academics and curriculum items. So trustees, are there any questions on this item? Okay, we will move on to nine, which is related to the polling, excuse me, to board administration and the polling places. Questions? All right. Well, we will, next section is 10, Business and Finance. Trustees, are there any questions here? Any questions? I did have a question about 10.3. That is the approval of the service agreement with Certification Associates and Worker Protection Monitoring. Superintendent, I know this is related to a bond resolution that was, a board resolution that was passed right at this, I think the same night, right before we voted on the bond package in 2022. Could you just give us a high-level explanation or, hello, Kenneth Wallace? Or, what do I always get you? Walker, I always get your last name wrong, I'm sorry. Mr. Walker, can you just give us a high-level explanation of what this is about?
Sure. Thank you, President, Saint Superintendent, and Board of Trustees. So Certification Associates is a vendor that we will utilize as a part of our 2022 bond to monitor worker protection. So the board instituted a resolution whereby all 2022 bond projects and contracts contain certain provisions providing protection, so ensuring that there was a certain level of training for all workers on certain construction sites, that there was wage, certain wage requirements for each of those workers. So this provides an additional level of oversight or compliance and adherence with those elements of the board resolution that are also contained in the contract. So this will give that oversight, actually requires the Certification Associates to go out to each site, interview workers, and they'll send periodic reports back to the district on compliance with those measures.
I really appreciate that. My understanding is this is something that not all districts do.
I, I'm not aware of many that, that have done it. And I think one of the things that is a real opportunity here is, you know, we do have a very large bond program with a variety of different sized projects. And I think one of the things we had to work through was just the recognition that there are some very, very small projects that don't necessarily kind of meet the, kind of expectation or intent, and there's some very, very large ones where we need to make sure we have belts and suspenders. And so I think Kenneth and the different groups that we worked with did a good job of getting to a place where we can implement something, because it hasn't been done in school districts, and it hasn't been done at this scale. So we're excited about taking this forward and looking forward to kicking this off.
Great, appreciate that. And so this is Certification Associates, it's going to be working with how many of our contracts?
Well, we go by projects.
Oh, by projects, yes. How many projects would that be?
Twenty-five.
It's 25, it's the largest projects.
Okay.
I think that's the.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Trustee Zapata.
Is, is that a part of the Better Builders?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right, yeah. So I know the city has adopted it, the county.
Correct. I, I will say that typically when they're adopted by different entities, they're project-specific or development-specific. We have many, many projects across the entire city, so we had to really think through how we could implement it and have Austin I S D be the owner of the contract opposed to the general contractor or the development firm, which is typically what you would see. So I think that's one of the reasons why this is a tailored approach for this specific solution.
Great. All right, thank you. All right, so just continuing with the agenda preview. Next is section 11, Talent Strategy. Trustees, are there any questions on these items? Yes?
Just want to confirm that there are no employees listed in those two categories or that'll be pending the meeting. Okay, I mean, thank you.
All right. Next is section 12, Policy. Trustees, any questions on these items? All right? Okay. Next is 13, Other. Trustees, any questions on these items? Yes?
I just want to note that 13.2 is in a local agreement with the Mexican-American Community Center to continue the district collaborative projects of Academia Quatley and Aztec Kids' Code. And so it's kind of hidden under the name there, but for any of our, our thousands of viewers, it's in the agenda.
Our dozens, yes, good. And that's an amazing program too. Glad to see that continue on. All right, so this ends our regular agenda preview. We will move to the item for action. We do have one special item for action, and that's the Travis Central Appraisal District nominations. So due to new timelines for the Travis Central Appraisal District or T C A D, we have added an action item to tonight's board meeting for consideration of nominations to the T C A D Board of Directors. The district can put out a call for interested community members and the administration and our intergovernmental chair, which is Secretary Boswell, reviewed applications. We have five names we will vote to approve, to submit as nominations before the deadline of October 14th. So following this, T C A D will provide a list of all nominees, and the board will consider action on voting for nominees at the November 21st regular voting meeting. So Secretary Boswell, I don't know if you had anything to maybe add to this?
I think the only thing to add, I really appreciate, we had almost 20 applicants show up to show interest in this. This is a really important piece of how schools in Texas are funded. This happens in every county in Texas, that there's an appraisal district. And these aren't the people who will appraise, but they're the people who hire the chief appraisers, set the budget, create policies, so they play a very important role. And really appreciate people who are our past appointees who are interested in continuing and the people who stepped up to show interest in becoming our new nominees. So thank you to everyone who, who showed up to be part of that, and we'll be asking again next year, so.
Great, wonderful. And Secretary Boswell, do we have a motion to approve items 14, item 14.1?
Yes, I move to approve item 14.1, Travis Central Appraisal District nominations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so is there any discussion? All right, so having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Zapata to approve item 14.1, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, the motion passes unanimously by all those on the dais. So we will now recess the open meeting at 9:23 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. When we are finished with the exec session, we will briefly return to the open session to formally adjourn the meeting, and the adjournment will be recorded and included in all replays. Thank you for joining us and have a great evening. All right, so we will now reconvene the open meeting at 12:22 AM. Secretary Boswell, do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Having a motion by Secretary Boswell and a second by Trustee Zapata to adjourn, all those in favor, please raise your right hand, the motion passes unanimously, the motion, the meeting is adjourned at 12:22 AM. Thank you, goodbye.